All public bodies of executive branch, public bodies, including education, conduct it electronically, either by means of telephone call or video call. The information regarding this meeting, including information on how to attend and/or access the meeting electronically, was published on October 10, 2020, on the Red Clay District website under the Public Notices section. Individuals may participate in this meeting either in person or via Zoom conferencing, and may speak by completing the public comment form available and submitting it at least one and a half hour prior to the start of the meeting. In order to speak by Zoom, you must have completed the form and provided notice electronically along with a complete Zoom name, first and last name, or appear at the meeting in person at Cab and submitting the form prior to the meeting. We're holding this meeting as a hybrid so people can access the meeting remotely via Zoom or in person at Cab Calloway School of Arts. This is our first hybrid meeting, but the eighth time we held an electronic meeting using Zoom. And we thank you for your continued support and patience as we continue to encounter new issues and work through details. We learn something new each electronic meeting, and we get better with each meeting and experience. I am certainly going to learn a lot during this hybrid meeting. As a courtesy to others and to prevent unnecessary disruption, all devices will be muted unless and until you are recognized to speak. As mentioned, if you sign up, your Zoom name must be what you put into the public comment form you completed to be recognized. At this Zoom meeting, it's a little bit different. So we have, right now, we have Dr. Bohm on Zoom, and Mr. Matthews either will be on Zoom or is on Zoom currently. The remaining board members are here in person, Mr. Casper, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Sabo. So we're going to have kind of a combination of both. And so in order to ensure that we can hear each other, people will have to, I will recognize people to speak during public comment, and everybody else will be muted. But during the public discussion portion, board members are going to have to let me know that they want to speak so that I can recognize them and our sound people can unmute their mic. We may, during the poll vote, we may get some feedback in the auditorium because Maria Stevens, who is on Zoom, Dr. Bohm, Mr. Matthews, and the board members will all be unmuted at that time. And apparently, we may have a little bit of feedback in this room. So big applause as we work through this.
Ms. Thompson, I wanted to make note that Dr. Bohm is in the waiting room. So Ms. Stevens and Mr. Clemens, if you could just provide her with her.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote for each item to be voted on. Board should identify themselves prior to speaking, and this meeting is being recorded. So we start off, as we always do, with a pledge of allegiance.
Can we give one moment again to make sure we have Dr. Bohm in?
Okay, is Dr. Bohm in?
We can say the pledge and then not begin the official meeting until we have a ruling.
That'd be fine. So the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do the moment of silence? Okay, so we're still waiting for Dr. Bohm, but we will do the moment of silence for Mark Papari from the Meadowwood Program. Mark Papari passed away on September 27, 2020. Mark was a paraprofessional with the Meadowwood Transition Program for almost five years. Mark comes from a family that is deeply rooted in Red Clay schools. Mark's mom, Linda Papari, was a paraprofessional for 20 years prior to her passing in 2018. Mark is survived by his father, Joseph Papari, who worked for Red Clay for 36 years prior to his retirement from Thomas McCain High School. Mark is deeply loved, Mark deeply loved the students and staff in the Meadowwood Program and was always willing to help a student or a colleague. Mark was an avid sports fan and loved talking sports with the students during their weekly sports clubs. Mark will be deeply missed by all. Moment of silence for Mark, please. Thank you all. Is Dr. Bohm in yet?
Ms. Stevens had to resend her the link, so we're still trying to get her access to it.
Okay.
All right. I see her name. All right, so Dr. Bohm is here. We do apologize for the technical difficulty. Understanding that we continue to evolve with our board meetings, going from Zoom to in-person to now this hybrid version. So, Dr. Bohm, we apologize for the technical difficulty, but more importantly, to the community, thank you for your patience.
And with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So move. That's a move by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sabo. Any discussion? Okay, we need to have a vote, and so we may get feedback in the room. Maria, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Can you hear me, Kathy?
Barely, Maria.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, better.
Okay. Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews is not here. He'll be arriving at a later time, around 7:30 this evening. Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, now there are public recognitions. So Ms. Taylor Greene.
Good evening and thank you, Ms. Thompson. Tonight, we have the pleasure of celebrating some great news and recent achievements in Red Clay. First, in education, one of the greatest titles an educator can earn is Teacher of the Year. Last spring, we announced Red Clay's newest Teacher of the Year winners from all of our schools. At Thomas McCain High School, that winner was English teacher Kimberly Stock, and she went on to become the District Teacher of the Year for Red Clay. Well, last week, Kim earned yet another title when she was named as Delaware's 2021 Teacher of the Year. We have a short video so you can see just how that went.
Oh, it's always a pleasure, it's always a privilege to be able to recognize the best of the best. We have such amazing educators in the state of Delaware. And to be able to recognize them and to have the public recognize them, although only one person will be chosen as this year's Delaware Teacher of the Year, we have so many people that she will represent or he will represent.
And to everyone listening tonight, please know that teachers and students need your help, support, grace, and prayers. This has been a difficult year marked with loss, and it's been unprecedented. But you have 20 Delaware District Teachers of the Year to help provide perspective on our schools, educators, and students since we are the ones with our boots on the ground. And two, our English learner teachers and English learner students, rest assured that you and your students matter. And this year, every educator and decision-maker in Delaware will understand why RELs deserve equitable funding and every opportunity out there.
Well, as Delaware's, do a round of applause for it. As Delaware's nominee for the National Teacher of the Year Award, Kim will use her position to share her message about how schools must adapt to give students equitable access and opportunities. Kim's passion for supporting students who face difficult challenges comes from her own life experiences. Abandoned as a child in South Korea, she said she does not know her age, birthplace, or given name. After living with a foster family in Korea, Kim was adopted by a family in Nebraska. Despite experiencing moments of trauma, racism, illness, loss, and death caused by ethnic violence, she was given new opportunities and second chances. Recognizing that her success today is the result of people opening doors for her because they believed in her, Kim tries to be the one opening those doors for her students, starting by better preparing her colleagues to instruct them. You will see much more of Kim on our Red Clay channels over the next several months as we follow her journey as a teacher, an educational leader, a diversity champion, and a change-maker for Red Clay students. Kim is watching tonight with her family from home, and so I'd like to ask everyone to join me in giving a loud round of applause for Kim Stock, Delaware's newest Teacher of the Year. Next up, please. If you've followed Red Clay schools over these past several months, you've seen our nutrition services team and the transportation team hard at work preparing and delivering healthy meals to go for students across the community. Led by Red Clay's Manager of Nutrition Services, Jessica Terranova, this team has served hundreds of thousands of meals to help keep children fed while schools are closed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. How did they do it? Well, we have a short clip where you can see Jessica and the team in action.
Since the governor closed schools, which started on March 15, starting as a two-week closure, the Red Clay Nutrition Department quickly collaborated with the Transportation Department to develop a mobile feeding program where we load school buses with meals and take meals out to the community at 19 sites. We're serving about 3,000 kids every single day that may not have access to meals who usually rely on the school meals program. An important part of our emergency feeding team is to make sure the food that we're giving out to our community is also healthy. So our meal packs consist of an entree, which is generally whole grains and a lean protein. And then we also have fruit and vegetables for every lunch. So a completely well-balanced meal, also healthy and very shelf-stable as well because we want to keep food safety in mind during all of this. So all of our food is thawed and served and shelf-stable. So you can take it home, pop it right in your fridge, and it's good to go.
So not surprisingly, this team's great work was recognized a couple weeks ago when First Lady Tracy Quillan Carney and members of the End Childhood Hunger Task Force honored them with the First Chance Award for stepping up to keep feeding Delaware children when school buildings had to close from mid-March through June due to COVID-19. On behalf of the entire Red Clay community, we want to say congratulations and thank you to Jessica, the Nutrition Services staff, Kelly Shanahan, and the Transportation Team members who quickly jumped into action when schools closed last spring. Many of them are watching tonight, so please, once again, join me in giving them all a big round of applause.
Thank you very much, Ms. Greene. Now we go on to public comment. Again, thank you for coming out tonight to attend our meeting and share your thoughts. Under Board Policy 2006, the board encourages the staff and community to share concerns about school issues and educational programs. Sharing can be verbally, in writing, and by speaking at the meeting. As mentioned above, we have received many comments and emails, and have had many discussions with parents and constituents about a whole host of issues. Under Board Policy 2006, the board shall provide a time period of up to 30 minutes at each board meeting for public comments, which time may be extended at the board's discretion. Speakers are requested to give a written comment copy of their remarks to the superintendent. Speakers are limited to three-minute time period. The time will be monitored, or will Mr. Clemens and Maria will have a timer up, which will signify when your three minutes are done, and at that point, your mics will be muted. So the first two people that we have speaking are in the room, and the rest will be on Zoom. I'm going to call each individually, and we're going to do this muting and unmuting so that we have little feedback. So the first is Mr. Anthony Swabinski, and welcome, Mr. Swabinski.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Swabinski. I'm a self-graduated teacher at the John Dickinson School in the Middle Years Program. I'm in the very challenging position of being an RCEA building representative who is very much in favor of the reopening of schools while most of my colleagues in the building and throughout the district are of the opposing mindset. I spoke with the board media in August that I asked that schools open on time and in person. So I want to express my gratitude to the board for voting to allow schools reopen in November and for Superintendent Greene for doing as necessary, get kids back in classroom. This first marking period has been among my least enjoyable and most difficult in my 13 years of teaching. I love my kids, and after staring at black boxes as students go and turn on their cameras feels very defeating. When you ask a discussion question, no response. It's depressing. When you can't help your students who require extra support because it's too challenging to implement online, you feel very helpless. The best day of the entire year for me was last Friday, the 16th, when we had a pop-up class at Dickinson, and I was able to teach two lessons to students in person. I felt like a real teacher again. The excitement, the energy for my students was palpable, and I had a smile on my face the whole day, even though it was covered with a mask. This week, I decided to ask my students what they thought of virtual learning. Some did have a few positive comments, but many others were not. Here are a few things that I heard. It makes my head hurt. I miss my friends, the building, and my teachers. I'm lonely, sad, and bored. I'd be okay even with the bad parts of school again. Is this worth ruining the mental health of an entire generation? Teachers aren't loud enough, or the internet lags, and I can't understand them. I can't gelt the help I need online. I want to go back to school so bad. I'm happy schools reopening. I really hope everything goes smoothly and safely. I know my teachers are trying their hardest for online, but it's just not the same. I'm fully aware this year won't be the same due to safety restrictions, but I'm approaching reopening of schools with excitement and not fear. I actually started a countdown to November the 4th, 14 days in counting, for those who aren't aware. Life is inherently risky. We teachers have the most central job in the world, and we can't hold her down inside our homes forever while so many of our students are hearing from real human interaction and education. And if any of the families of my students are listening, or your child is in my room, I'm going to treat them like a human being, not a wolf and virus. Thank you again for giving me a chance to meet my kids one more time, once more this year, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Swabinski. Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Linda Reagan. Welcome, Ms. Reagan. And do you see the timer?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to share an email that I sent this morning to the board and to Superintendent Greene. I would like to thank you for remaining flexible to changing the school reopening plan as you continue to hear the concerns of your students, families, and teachers. Particularly for middle school and high school levels, the addition of the Zoom option for online learning is a refreshing upgrade from the AE platform. And the cohort model for in-class seems to provide a more safe in-school option by cutting down, by cutting down total number of students. I'm writing today to ask that you continue to evaluate the in-school option at the elementary school level. I continue to hear from teachers that their class sizes will be no smaller and, in many cases, will actually be larger than they are normally. I understand that, for whatever reason, it's been justified at the state level that three feet of social distancing from the center of each desk is considered acceptable as a minimum requirement for social distancing. I challenge you as a district and as a board to expect more of ourselves than the bare minimum. Our children deserve more than the minimum. Our teachers deserve more than the minimum. As an act of solidarity for our teachers and elementary school students, I ask that the board and Superintendent Greene sit three feet apart from the center of each seat, wearing your masks for the duration of the meeting, and then think about our five-to-10-year-olds doing that for seven hours every day. And if you're unwilling to risk doing this, please answer why you're willing to allow the bare minimum for our teachers and children when you're not willing to take on that risk yourself. I have heard that the reason that six-foot social distancing is the standard for board meetings and three feet is acceptable in the school setting is because our schools are considered controlled environments, whereas a public board meeting has members coming from the general public. Please understand that this answer is not a valid one. Every day, students will be joining a classroom having come from the general public. I know that you've indicated that you will make every attempt to grant the six-foot social distance where feasible. What I am asking is that try becomes do. Our teachers deserve more than the bare minimum. Our five-to-10-year-olds deserve more than the bare minimum. Thank you for your continued efforts during this most difficult of times. Please keep our families safe, not just stay compliant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan. And now we turn to commenters that are on Zoom. So the first is Mr. Mike Matthews. Welcome, Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, board and Mr. Greene. My name is Mike Matthews. I'm an eighth-grade English special education teacher at Skyline Middle School, and I serve as the CFRC liaison for the Red Clay Education Association. Before I begin my comments tonight, I'd like to acknowledge a man who held a special place in my life. Mr. Clyde Knotts was a retired Red Clay educator who also happened to be my seventh-grade science teacher at Cab Calloway more than 25 years ago. He was a kind, effervescent man who built relationships with his students by making sure they all enjoyed their lunch before arriving for fifth-period science. Mr. Knotts and I reconnected 15 years later through our work with our union, and we maintained a friendship, like so many of us do, on social media all these years later. Sadly, Mr. Knotts was taken from us far too early last week. He leaves behind a wife and countless friends who will miss his smile, laugh, and contagious compassion. Behind me is a picture of Mr. Knotts in one of his most favorite environments. Mr. Knotts was a good man. Let's remember him tonight. For the remainder of my public comment, I'd like to talk to the parents of Red Clay because so many of our educators feel the board didn't listen to us last week. I think it's time we communicate directly to those stakeholders. Parents, please know that your child's educators realize this has been a tough eight months for you. It has been a tough eight months for us as we learn completely new ways to reach and engage our students. Please know that we know that many of you want your children back in school as soon as possible. As educators, there is nothing more that we want than to be in our classrooms where we can see our students every day. Please know that your child's educators are fighting for them at the local and state level to ensure they return to schools that are as safe as they can possibly be in an environment of rising cases where we learn more about this mysterious virus and its effects with every passing day. Please know that we are advocating for your students to enter classrooms with distancing protocols of the highest standard possible, as well as making sure adequate and readily available PPE are provided to all staff and students, no questions asked. Even with the CDC revising its definition of, quote, "close contact," end quote just three hours ago, we will work to create the safest environment possible for your child. Please know that your child's educators are fighting, like we always do, for class sizes that allow for the most vibrant and safest learning possible, either in-person or remotely. We will continue to be partners with you in your child's education, but please know our priority right now is fighting for the safest environment possible to ensure the health of everyone within our schools. You love your children. We love our students. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And next is Ms. Kristin Stone. Welcome, Ms. Stone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Quote, "For those attending in person, you must maintain a social distance of at least six feet from others, and a mask must be worn at all times," end quote. This is a direct quote from www redclayschools.com/849, the page publicizing tonight's school board meeting. Let me quote this again for you. "For those attending in person, you must maintain a social distance of at least six feet from others, and a mask must be worn at all times," end quote. Again, this is found at redclayschools.com. Brandywine Colonial and Apocentumic School Districts are all requiring six feet of physical distance, just to name a few. How can Red Clay's school district rationalize at least six feet of distancing at a school board meeting when this is not required in a small classroom full of young children and innocent teachers? I ask the board and the district this. Are your lives more important than our children's lives? Are your lives more important than our teachers' lives? Are your lives more important than paraprofessionals' lives? Are your lives more important than our parents' lives? And I will finish simply with this wise guidance in this age of a pandemic where no end is in sight. Quote, "For those attending in person, you must maintain a social distance of at least six feet from others, and a mask must be worn at all times," end quote.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Next is Ms. Amy Norton. Welcome, Ms. Norton.
Hi. I'm an English teacher at AI High School. Somewhat ironically, in this meeting where I have the full three minutes to talk, I have less to say. I'm sure that the board has received I'm sure that the board has received plenty of responses about last meeting and how disappointed people were to have their minutes cut, or the feeling of disappointment that the board members came with prepared statements rather than waiting to hear what those who didn't email, such as myself, had to say. While I'm disappointed by this conduct last meeting, I also recognize that the board had to make a difficult decision and that a vote has been made. So instead of fighting that old battle, I want to take this time to advocate for teacher safety and ask that the board continue to check in on what teachers are seeing in school and listen to us. On Monday, I went into my classroom to prepare, and while I was there, a custodian was walking by cleaning door handles with the eco cleaner. He sprayed it, he wiped it down, left. About 20 minutes later, I left my classroom, closed the door, got some cleaner on my hands, and my skin burned. While I understand the SDS sheet that you guys are operating from says this shouldn't happen, that's my experience. I would encourage you guys to come to see our classrooms, meet in our classrooms in the same conditions that the teachers are teaching for seven hours out of the day. You know, three feet apart with masks on. Additionally, I'd like to call attention to some faulty data which has been being shared, which could change part of the perception of this decision. People have said that 90% of teachers elected to come back. This is because of a survey that was sent out through Human Resources, and we were told, and I'm quoting this from an email, "If an employee refuses to return in person, does not have a medical reason, and cannot be assigned to..."
Really look at our offer as a...
The employee would need to decide whether to report... 70% of parents elected to come back, but this was from a survey in July where only about 3,700 parents participated. That's, I believe, about 20% of our population, and it's 70% of the respondents were white, which is disproportionate to our diversity. Elementary school teachers are being told not to photograph their classrooms or communicate what this will look like with their parents. RCA members are being, like it's told that they were part of the board or the decision-making group for this decision, and yet they weren't part of the decisions since August. So we weren't given a seat at the table to help with this hybrid plan while we are meeting with the district once a week. One teacher at my school submitted a doctor's note and was told she was only a mild risk despite what her physician had to say. I want to make sure that people are seeing this reality and that they are protecting the students and the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. And as an aside, my understanding is that Mr. Matthews has now joined the meeting via Zoom, just to note that. So next up is Ms. Patty Puskarczak. Welcome, Ms. Puskarczak.
Hi. Thanks. I am a Red Clay teacher and parent. My name is Patty Puskarczak. I know it's a hard name. I get it. Thank you for letting me speak again. Last time I spoke, I had four words. We are not ready. Today, I have three words. I don't know. If I had a dollar for every time I said those words or someone has said those words to me, I could retire today. How could we possibly go back with so much up in the air? We have less than two weeks, and I have heard these words too many times to feel safe or prepared. And for those of you who are saying parents like myself had a choice, while that was true, we had to make these decisions with little to no information. Parents were asking me questions about procedures, and I had to say, "I don't know." I found out most of my information from the parent meetings at the same time as the parents, when I should have known these answers ahead of time as a district employee. Yesterday, I just found out that teachers will not be required to wipe down desks in between classes. As a teacher, I get it. We are way too busy. But as a parent of a middle school and high school student, I'm concerned. Yesterday, I was asked if I had to teach my special education students in person as well as the online students, and I said, "I don't know." Teachers are crying and stressed out because they don't know how to teach with all the restrictions and the ever-changing guidelines. Again, I don't know. We all just don't know, so why aren't we taking a couple of weeks to figure this out? Again, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Audrin is not here, so the next person is Mr. Randall Stone. Welcome, Mr. Stone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening. I'm Randall Stone, Cook Elementary teacher. With just 11 days, 11 days to go, we have to realize that the plan to have 14 to 20 elementary students sitting within a classroom for long hours straight, less than six feet apart, will not be safe or appropriate environment during this pandemic. This is a possibility in at least five elementary schools. There is a logical solution to our overcrowded classroom plan at the elementary level. Make two cohort groups and do half-days or two days per week plus an asynchronous day. The hybrid plan, like all other districts nearby and our secondary schools, will help to ensure we can keep the students six feet apart and possibly have the students enjoying being there. As it stands now, we cannot stop the virus from coming into our schools, but we certainly cannot keep it from spreading with less than six feet. A massive breakout could happen. Even if only a few get sick, we still don't know the long-term repercussions students or adults will face down the road. The CDC does say that COVID-19 can be spread from asymptomatic children to their families. Some kids might go undetected, but it can show up between two and 14 days after contacting it from another student. We must anticipate that COVID-19 will show up in every school. Secondary schools have a chance to stop it from spreading because of their two smaller cohorts. In Cook Elementary School, the rooms are not big enough to have students sit less than six feet apart as the plan stands now. The students will also be inside the rooms for long periods of time. If a fourth and fifth grader, for example, has art, music, or special, even health class in the room because they can't have phys ed outside if it's inclement weather, and they have indoor recess, it's possible they will stay in that room for up to six hours, sitting at their desks. Sitting for this length of time is to ensure that we can keep them apart from each other. If we had six feet, as in the hybrid model, and less kids, we would have the ability, the kids would have the ability to move around, which would improve the quality of their school day immensely. Besides the possibility of getting COVID-19, think about what we're doing to our students. Would you want to sit at your desk with a mask on in a room with 18 students close together and one small window for five to six hours without being able to get up for, except for lunch, maybe a drink break or a bathroom break? Let's rethink this and start out slow with a hybrid. Let's get, let's not get people sick, and let's not make kids dislike school. There is no question, we all want to be there to teach the kids and to see the kids learn. But let's be safe with our two cohorts and allow the students to enjoy school. If all goes well, then move forward with a full opening. Students and families deserve quality, not discomfort, and certainly not sickness caused by questionable decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. And I understand that Ms. Sarah Audrin is here, so welcome, Ms. Audrin.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm a Red Clay resident and I'm a healthcare professional at a local hospital. So I see the horror of COVID-19 every single day. You only need to see a patient prone on a ventilator once to know that this disease is real. It's not numbers, it's not statistics, it's real, and it kills. It kills because it spreads so easily from people who may be asymptomatic. And as science has taught us, it spreads most easily indoors without social distancing, now eponymous with greater than six feet and in the absence of wearing a mask. This is all extremely relevant as we open schools in person and try to provide the safest and most controlled environment for our children. Problematically, we cannot control that schools must be indoors, especially as we approach winter. We also cannot control face masks at all times as children must eat and will also occasionally forget. What we can and must control is the way we socially distance the classroom. Luckily, there is no lack of guidance or science on how to socially distance a classroom. Science tells us clearly and consistently that we must be at least six feet apart. The CDC, Delaware.gov, Harvard, MIT, Johns Hopkins, you name it, they advocate for six feet of distance. There is little debate here. In fact, the only debate I have seen is the newest studies that have found that six feet of distance may not even be enough indoors. Though six-feet guidance may only be sufficient for outdoors, yet you have approved placing our elementary students three feet apart. You cannot possibly or intellectually think that this is safe. So I have to assume you are pandering to political or parental pressure. It would seem to me that as educators, you would be ethically bound to listen to science to protect our children, that you would be ethically bound to ignore political pressure or loud voices to protect our children. Please, please listen and please protect them. You demanded six feet of distance at your meeting tonight, so you must believe the science when it is intended to protect you. Why would you not believe it when it is intended to protect your students and teachers? I really have no further questions for you because the answers to me seem painfully clear. The only question I will leave you with is this. Is it okay if one person, perhaps me, perhaps my coworker, perhaps your coworker, or someone you never met, if that one person dies because you intentionally disregarded the science and created an unsafe classroom? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Audrin. Next is Mr. Ray Rissmiller. Welcome, Mr. Rissmiller.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. As I said, my name is Ray Rissmiller. I'm a proud Cook teacher who has been blessed to work in a school building with a great staff, administration, supportive parents, and some awesome kids since Cook first opened. I appreciate that administration is trying to alleviate the crowded conditions at Cook, but the numbers are still high. The number of students coming back to Cook are over 73% compared to the district average of 41%. Cook is an outlier. The severity of this situation is being swept under the rug. Everyone is being told that our school can accommodate these numbers when they know we cannot. My class during this COVID crisis will have only five to six less children in the room as a normal square. The classrooms are already small and crowded. Now we have to separate each desk to half of the recommended distance set by the CDC and maintain social distance standards. There will be over 500 people in the building each and every day. There's no room to walk around the room and interact with the children. My smartboard and whiteboard are difficult to access due to students' desks being strewn about the room. Brick-and-mortar learning will feel like remote learning since the kids will be confined to their seats to promote social distancing hours at a time. Snacks and breaks will be difficult and limited due to the conditions to support the requirements of social distancing. I want to return to school, but this cannot happen until the district realizes that our numbers need to be cut in half. In order to have any semblance of appropriate teaching practices, we need to be maxed out at 12 students if no hybrid situation can occur. I am currently at 16 students if all home teachers stay in their rooms without a collapse. Some sort of hybrid system needs to be implemented, split the classes into two cohorts, have half-days with one group in the morning and one other in the afternoon, asynchronous instruction when they are not in school. That cannot happen. As I said before, we need to limit the class sizes at 12. As things stand right now, we are starting school as if COVID never existed. It will be impossible to follow and maintain adequate social distancing guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rissmiller. And the next up is Mr. Dan Caffeter. Welcome, Mr. Caffeter.
Hi there. Yes, my name is Dan Caffeter, and I am a teacher at Cab Calloway. I was also a student of Red Clay when I went to school. And I went to Cab and eventually graduated, and I've come back to teach. So I just wanted to take a little bit of time tonight to share my experience and the experience of some other teachers at Cab as we've been grappling with how to make sure that we're getting back to this hybrid model where we're going to have some students in person, some students online. And obviously, there's a lot of uncertainty among the teaching staff and a lot of stress that's come about as a result of that decision. Right now, a lot of teachers are struggling just with how to make the, how to make it possible for us to be able to teach online simultaneously while we are teaching in person. And I was hoping that there might be some models of instruction that the, that the Red Clay administration could provide to teachers so that we have a better sense of how to proceed. That's one thing that I wanted to advocate for tonight is just getting more support for how to manage both an online instructional model and also an in-person instructional model. Something else that I wanted to advocate for is planning time. I know that Wednesdays right now, as it stands, to my understanding, we haven't made a decision about how to use that time across the board. And I really think that we need more planning time for teachers. And the reason I say that is I go into Cab and I teach every day. I go in at 6:30, and generally speaking, I don't leave until 5 o'clock. And that's a really difficult, long day to work day in and day out. And so I'm using my time to plan outside of the three hours that I'm teaching. And I'm just at a point where it's difficult to find the time to plan effectively. So I'd like to advocate for Wednesdays for teacher time to plan. And the last thing is just, I really wanted to encourage the district administration to think about how their policies might be perceived by teachers when they have to deal with the realities of daily life with students. And I just, I feel like we're being hung out to dry a little bit, if I'm being honest. And that's all I really needed to say, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caffeter. So now I think we've come to our 30 minutes, and I will accept a motion to extend public comment. Is there a motion? Is it for the extent of the remaining public comment, Mr. Wilson? Okay. Mr. Wilson makes a motion to extend public comment for the remainder, to continue for the remainder of the people with three minutes each. Is there a second?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo seconds. So we need to have a vote, Maria? Please.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews? Mr. Matthews? Is he still muted, Tony?
Mr. Matthews, can you please unmute yourself?
Mr. Matthews? Okay. Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews? He's still muted, Tony.
Can we move on? There's feedback, so we ought to mute everybody. Because the motion passed. Okay, so the next up is Mr. Joseph Harper. Welcome, Mr. Harper. Mr. Harper? Mr. Harper is muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
I apologize.
No problem.
Thank you, School Board, for allowing me to speak. My name is Joe Harper, and I am speaking as a third-grade teacher at Cook Elementary and a resident of our district. Three weeks ago, my 44-year-old sister collapsed on her bedroom floor, unable to breathe. She was rushed by ambulance to the hospital where she was diagnosed with COVID-19. Her husband and her child also tested positive, but showed not a single symptom. My sister is far from the senior age group considered most vulnerable. Another friend of mine in his late 30s was hospitalized for two weeks, where one of those weeks rendered him unconscious. He nearly died. Please, let's not forget the very contagious and complicated disease that needs to be taken seriously. Last week, the board voted to approve of the Red Clay Phase II Plan, a plan that would allow for 73% of students back in Cook's building at one time, in addition to the teachers and staff. As we all know, when there are a lot of people gathered together, regardless of age, for a very long time, it increases the risk of creating a super-spreader event that could harm a lot of people rather quickly. If a super-spreader event would occur at Cook, this virus and its harmful effects could easily be passed on to the rest of our densely populated community. I do not believe this plan is in the best interest of our teachers. We must limit, if not cut, in half the number of people in a building at one time. The three-feet social distance that the Phase II Plan allows falls way short of the CDC's recommendation of six. In addition, we need to put in question if the three-feet social distancing standard would even abide by the Delaware Department of Labor's mandate that employers must adhere to the strict social distancing standards of the state of emergency. As the number of COVID-19 cases are rising, this should not be the time to loosen our expectations of social distancing, especially in our schools. In Governor Carney's most recent modification, he says that because of this virus, the risk of life remains. Education should not be in the business of negotiating with people's lives. We know people are dying from contracting this very contagious disease. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it is up to you to keep everybody safe. You are the decision-maker. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it is up to you to keep everybody safe. You are the decision-makers on this. The state's guidelines for opening clearly explain that the district's plan would look different based on its population. As you know, Red Clay is the most densely populated school district in the state. Brandywine School District was able in their plan to limit the number of students per classroom to eleven. Yet Red Clay Plan allows for eighteen students in some classes at Cook, not to mention that third graders.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Next, we have Ms. Erin Gomez. Welcome, Ms. Gomez.
Good evening. My name is Erin Gomez and I'm an elementary special education coordinator at Cook Elementary School. I have been asked to speak on behalf of the special educators in my building. Special education and EOL teachers, as well as related service providers, serve students from multiple classrooms and sometimes multiple buildings. This would mean that students and staff from multiple classrooms are utilizing the same space, materials, and desks. The guidance that has been provided might look great on paper, however, it is not in practice. On the guidance document, one of the suggestions was to pull small groups of students from the same home or a limited number of classrooms and maintain the same groups. Great on paper, but not great in practice when you have to ensure that the very needs of all students are met. Additionally, how will remote learning look for students who are in a C setting, especially given that our special education teachers are being expected to teach both in-person and remote? Additionally, it was recommended that when scheduling small groups to allow time between them in order for the classroom surfaces to be sanitized. While we were under the impression that teachers were not expected to clean, if this is an expectation of staff, then why aren't staff receiving training on proper safety and cleaning protocols? Why are they being provided with cleaning materials that recommend the use of gloves and goggles? Why are staff members being asked to develop their own protocols for safe classroom operations? I appreciate that stakeholders' voices have been heard and suggestions incorporated throughout this process. We are mere seven school days away from welcoming students back into our traditional schools. While the transition plan was considered for students, this is not the case for staff, many of whom still do not have clear guidance on what or how they will be teaching. One day is not enough time to set up a classroom, learn a new grade-level curriculum, or caseload of students. For our elementary students, this is not a hybrid model. This is a full return four days a week. If Cook has unique needs, then they should be provided with a unique solution. It sounds like solutions to reduce homeroom class sizes are in the works. However, the lack of clear communication and easily accessible information has left more questions than answers. We ask for transparency and more timely communication. Additionally, we request that resources be looked at across the district as opposed to by building in order to not just reduce class sizes, but also to ensure equity for staff and students and that district resources are being utilized to the greatest extent possible in order to meet the unique needs of all students. This is not a make-it-work moment. This is the time to hit pause and ensure the safety of our students, staff, and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. And next is Ms. Kelly Furco. Welcome, Ms. Furco.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kelly Furco. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Richardson Park Elementary School and president of the Red Clay Education Association. I am here tonight to discuss the concerns of our members surrounding class sizes when returning to school on November second. I was invited to attend a member meeting at Cook Elementary on Monday. The staff at Cook is extremely concerned over the number of children that will be placed into their classrooms. Cook is not the only school. I've heard from several other schools in the district that this is an issue as well. With the setup in most classrooms, this will not leave much room for teachers to move safely around the rooms. Classrooms are going to look very different than they did in last March. Admin are being creative and thinking outside of the box to try to find out how this is going to look in each building. Are parents aware of the amount of students that are going to be in each classroom and the configurations of those rooms? The bottom line is that students and staff need to be safe. Having to be creative to figure things out is not very reassuring. November second will be here very quickly. We need solutions now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Furco. And next is Ms. Jessica Wolf. Welcome, Ms. Wolf.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent. So after the school meeting on October fifteenth, I sent this email to Dr. Green and I adjusted it for this evening's meeting. It's 2:00 AM and I'm still awake because I am still very upset about the school board meeting. As a result of the meeting, I'm convinced that our school board isn't genuinely interested in listening to its community, which includes students, parents, and teachers. The school board is obviously operating in a manner to simply appease the group that is shouting the loudest. I do not trust this school board. At the October fifteenth meeting, Dr. Bone made an excellent point about how we should feel about sending our kids to school when our educators aren't feeling equipped to teach them appropriately. My five-year-old tells me she wants to be a teacher when she grows up. Her kindergarten teacher at Linden Hill, Mrs. Hartman, has made a great impression on her. And I'm sad to think that she may no longer be Aria's teacher. But what's even sadder is that I don't want my daughter to become a teacher. Our teachers have one of the hardest jobs in the world, in my opinion, yet they aren't paid, supported, or heard enough. Why do we treat our teachers so badly? Is this the school district that you are proud of running, one that doesn't care for or listen to its most valuable asset? Our teachers are telling us that they are not ready. As a parent, am I supposed to feel comfortable with that? Am I supposed to trust that teachers will be able to educate and regulate pandemic precautions? Why are we making the job of a teacher, which is already challenging, so impossible? Am I supposed to tell my little girl that these harsh truths about what it's like to be a teacher, that nobody will listen to her or care for her well-being? This school board has appeased the voices of families by reshaping reopening plans. Why aren't we doing the same for our teachers? Their voices and lives matter too. Please take the time needed to co-create the right plan with teachers instead of rushing into reopening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I understand that Ms. Mansfield is not here, so the next is Ms. Erin Fitzpatrick. Welcome, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, board members. I am speaking tonight as a Red Clay educator. I am a kindergarten Spanish immersion teacher who has been very much looking forward to being back in the building with my class, instructing five- and six-year-old students, most of whom are experiencing the structure of school for the first time and in a new language, and virtually seemed an impossible task. And despite all the successes we have had over the past six weeks, I am still very eager to get back into the classroom with the little ones to do what I do best, teach in person. However, with less than two weeks before students enter my classroom during what is still a pandemic, we have dozens of unanswered questions. Building administrators have not been given consistent or clear guidance for reopening, nor answers for the ongoing list of questions we have about building operations and student interactions. For a district with very clear policies regarding wearing jeans, chewing gum, and how many copies we send to the printer, it's concerning that the response we continue to receive right now is, we're going to have to wait and see. Last week, Mr. Green gave a very thorough report of our district plans. Unfortunately, the devil is often in the details. As just one example, yes, the district has bought PPA and says it is readily available, but some buildings report it is not enough. What happens when a kindergartner spills milk on their mask, drops it in the toilet, breaks a string, or forgets it completely, or all of these in one morning? My own building believes that each teacher may have a supply of five extra masks. Five. This is completely unacceptable and the inconsistency of the board and throughout the district is embarrassing. I have been trying my best to reassure families of the reopening plan, only to be told by them that another building is doing something completely different. I am responsible for a class of kindergarten students and I'm still not sure what to do if one of them is in need of a mask. I don't know what to do if a student refuses to wear a mask. I don't know what to tell parents about mask breaks or the inevitable indoor recess. What is the procedure for the rest of the class if a student contracts COVID? And there are buildings that still cannot figure out basic social distancing guidelines. The buck must stop somewhere, and it is with you, the Red Clay School Board. You have been elected to represent the best interests of students in Red Clay. Are you in good conscience doing that right now? It was frustrating knowing that this board was more concerned about a meeting going too late with public comment than the multitude of concerns presented within that meeting. Luckily for each of you, you will not be in a classroom on November second. You will not have to wonder if there's enough mask or figure out how to comfort five-year-olds without giving them a smile or a hug. You won't have to worry about sharpening pencils, opening glue, or zipping up coats in a sanitary way. I urge you to engage in the district you represent. Take a walk through some of these pandemic-ready classrooms and buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. The next is Mr. Ryan Cabba Osavedo. Welcome, Mr. Cabba Osavedo. Mr. Cabba Osavedo.
Oh, hello?
We can hear you.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. My name is Ryan Jose Cabba Osavedo and I am a senior at AI High School. Today, I would like to talk about why we shouldn't be bringing our students back to school. COVID-19 is a strain of the flu, and now we are going into a flu season. Bringing students back isn't okay. I know what my family is doing to follow the CDC guidelines, but I do not know if somebody else in their family are also following those CDC guidelines. Why send children back to sacrifice their lives? I believe sending children back to school isn't the right decision, and yes, we all need money, but money is not worth life. Also, students aren't going to be able to talk to each other at lunch. Even in some classes, there will only be two students, so what socialization are they going to get there? COVID-19 affected me and millions of people around the globe, and COVID-19 took my grandmother from me. My grandmother contracted COVID and got past it, but unfortunately, the aftereffects on her body took my grandmother away from me. Losing her made me realize this is a virus that is not to be played with. I have a question for all teachers, parents, and the board. If this were your children that are being sent back to school during a pandemic, would you send them back with, before we gain some possible federal guidelines to follow? Would you be willing to live with the fact that you were throwing your child's life away and possibly your own? The board didn't even meet in person for the first two meetings, so why send them back to school? Parents explained in the last meeting their kids now have anxiety issues and even depression. And I go through that myself, but I'd rather deal with that than go back to a school where I have the possibility of dying. Within the rising cases of COVID-19 in almost every state, going back is not an option yet. We are jeopardizing teachers, students, employees, and their families. Sending them back will only make us go three steps back instead of five steps forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabba Osavedo. Next is Ms. Nicole Schneider. Welcome, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you very much. I am a parent of a student that goes to Red Clay School District. My concern is my daughter has severe ADHD and anxiety. We struggle through this every day with Zoom and other computer problems going on, and it causes her anxiety to hyphen. I am a first responder. I'm a first responder and I go to work every day with a mask on and I have yet to contract COVID. I take my risk out there and I also bring my risk into my family. And I think that these children need to go back to school. My daughter is a three-year-old who goes to preschool and they do not wear masks and they are running the classrooms with shorter students and they seem to be doing it successfully since September. So I please ask you as the board to please send these kids back. Even if it's two days to four days, give them the time that they need with the hands-on with their teachers and their other students to feel like they are being socialized. The anxiety and the mental health in these students are having major issues and the mental health right now, there's a high suicidal rate in students between seven and eighteen years of age. So please consider these numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Next is Mr. Jeff Salmons. Welcome, Mr. Salmons.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, good evening. My name is Jeff Salmons. Let me start by saying that the majority of teachers want to return to school despite what you may be hearing. I am a proud fourth-grade teacher at Cook Elementary, and I would like to recognize the hard work our administration continues to put in. Thank the district leaders who have visited our school this week seeking solutions. Although there have been some recent changes, they are not enough. So, parents, your voices are the ones we need. Let me take you through what a school day in Red Clay will most likely look like. Your child will enter their classroom with desks spaced three feet apart, passing much closer than three feet when moving past other children. They'll brush past for bathroom breaks, pencil sharpening, hand washing, and moving in general. Some grade levels will stay at their seats for four hours, truly not exaggerating, our lunch is at 1:00 PM. And some grade levels are scheduled for even longer periods of time than that. The most movement teachers will be able to offer with our class sizes, which are sixteen, is that students can choose to sit or stand while working. Three-foot spacing between desks does not allow for any extra room in our classrooms to even walk without, again, brushing between desks. After four hours, we go to lunch where children will sit six feet apart and have little chance to interact. Recession follows where they can finally get out some energy, unless it's inclement weather, which we can kind of count on since we're starting in November. So it's back to our classroom for indoor recess where we cannot share materials or move around the room with three feet. So really, it's back to our desks for two hours until dismissal. Red Clay families, every day we are in session, we will be close to five hundred people in our building. Our class sizes average sixteen children. This is not a hybrid model. It is full swing back to school with Wednesday's async. So what's the solution? Many local school districts have committed to a true hybrid model with A-day, B-day cohorts of students. Brandywine has committed to less than twelve students per class, citing, quote, "despite guidance allowing three feet of social distancing." A true hybrid model will allow teachers to appropriately distance desks and therefore open up those movement opportunities within the classroom. It will cut the amount of bodies in our building almost by half, which will help with car lines, transportation, hallway movement, school procedures we don't even have time to get into. Parents, we are seven school days away from your children's return to our buildings. There is still time to push for a true hybrid. I hope you can visualize what our day-to-day will look like. Close to five hundred people in the building, hours-long stretches of time with little to no movement, three-foot spacing, the minimum requirement. Teachers want to be in school. We want our students to be in school, but we want and deserve more than the minimum for your children.
Thank you, Mr. Salmons. Next is Mr. Stephen Fackenthal. Welcome, Mr. Fackenthal.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, board. My name is Stephen Fackenthal, music teacher at Ritchie Elementary and vice president of the Red Clay Education Association. While you heard our president and many other teachers speak tonight regarding our grave concern about high class sizes and the ability to properly socially distance for the safety of all, I'm speaking to you about the other side of the coin and requesting equitable consideration of class sizes for our remote Zoom teachers in our elementary schools. The time and effort needed to maintain remote learning is massive. Engagement, equitable work, small groups, creating digital materials and meeting the needs of students with special needs. We have all experienced this over the last few weeks. These tasks will not change for our remote teachers, and while things may have gotten a bit easier as the weeks went on, the time needed to provide equitable instruction for all learners is still needed. I would implore the district to cap the amount of remote students per teacher. Any class over thirty students for one teacher is completely intangible. We cannot forget that they are part of this as well and deserve as much consideration as our teachers heading back for in-person learning. On a personal note, this job requires a lot. It requires sacrifice of personal time, money, and health. We knew it would take away from our families many evenings and late, late nights, albeit we talk about self-care and setting limits. We knew sometimes budgets would be short and sometimes it's just easier to buy it yourself. We knew we'd get sick sometimes and be out some days because everyone has germs. I was talking with some teachers last week and two had spoken about how they were highly considering updating their wills. While I noted some of the sacrifices we are willing to take, at no point, and I recognize that this may sound like hyperbole to some, did we think we'd have to sacrifice our lives? There is a problem with that, and I'm not sure what type of self-care brings you back from those thoughts. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fackenthal. Next is Ms. Abigail Cooper. Welcome, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Abby Cooper and I am a teacher in Red Clay Consolidated School District at North Star Elementary School. I have already addressed my specific concerns with the Phase Two reopening through emails with Superintendent Green and the board members. I am very appreciative of the response I received on such notice from Superintendent Green. I know my voice is being heard. I am here this evening to make a brief statement that resonates with me every time I read it. I would like to quote the board's public notice for this evening Zoom hybrid meeting, which is at Cab Calloway. For those of you attending in person, you must maintain a social distance of six feet from others, and a mask must be worn at all times. How does this statement compare to children in a much smaller space only being required to maintain three feet of social distance with masks on? What mixed message does that send? Children aren't as important as adults? Or the facade that children can't catch or spread COVID? Three feet apart is not acceptable. I will leave you with this. I recently spoke to a medical doctor, and she asked me if I was scared about going back to school in person. I said yes. Her reply was, "You should be." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Next is Ms. Ann Bartley. Welcome, Ms. Bartley. Ms. Bartley?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your time, first of all, but I do not envy your positions, and I do not feel that you are making good decisions for the safety of our community. As a healthcare worker in a local children's hospital, we are told daily that exposure to COVID is any contact of less than six feet, totaling 15 minutes in a 24-hour period, even with a mask on. Our children will be less than three feet apart from each other for over seven hours. In light of that, I would like to know why the board is inconsistent in their opinion on safe social distancing? Why is it that you all sit more than three feet apart, but our children are to be less than three feet apart if we are measuring from the center of each seat? Why is it not okay for me to be a spectator outside with a mask on for a band performance at a football game, but less than three feet apart inside is acceptable for my child? I would like to know why we have chosen to use a chemical that is caustic and is proven to cause respiratory distress, skin burns, and hives to sanitize desks. This chemical requires 10 minutes to dry completely before a service is used, but that time has not been built into any of the schedules that I have seen being released by the district. My top-level student is considering getting a GED due to the horrible experience they are having online. But to choose to send them where they are less than the recommended distance from others and exposed to a caustic chemical feels like another horrible experience in the making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bartley. Next is Ms. Laura Boyle. Welcome, Ms. Boyle. Ms. Boyle?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Referring to the July 24 survey, I am represented by the 89% who support students and staff to continue online for medical reasons, the 70% who prioritize in-person instruction for those who needed special services, the 67% for in-person instructions for those who are at risk, the 66% for in-person for younger students, the 65% for allowing students and staff to continue online for any reason, the 63% who preferred a return to school in a hybrid format. This means I want teachers in school safely. I want our students in school safely. I want our schools to reopen safely. Concluding statements Red Clay included were, "Parents and guardians said, 'More than any other consideration, please prioritize student, staff, and family health above all else.'" Teacher said, "I am ready to go back, however, only if it's safe." "Students are my priority, and I truly miss them, however, I fear for my health as well as my students." I worry about the mental health of our students and staff. The most important step in ensuring a safe reopening is knowing that our school leadership will enforce regulations and effectively communicate teaching and safety expectations. However, a survey issued last week showed 70% of Red Clay educators voted no to "Are you comfortable returning to in-person instruction on November 2nd?" 58% of those teachers responded no to "Do you feel the necessary improvements have been made in your building to allow for a safe return?" These numbers are not to be dismissed. Tonight, those who have come to this meeting in person sit six feet apart as per CDC guidelines. Take a look around. That is double the amount of spacing that our students and teachers will have in some classrooms as they sit at their desks, not for an hour meeting, but for an entire day. Take a look at the space between you and the person to each your right, left, back, and front, and now cut it all by half. You've heard the need for students and teachers to return to school safely. Students are not coming from a controlled environment. They are coming from the general public, just as you have all done so tonight. If tonight requires six feet of spacing, then six feet should be the minimum standard inside our classrooms as well. Brandywine, Colonial, Abiquimac have all committed to six feet. Red Clay staff and students deserve the same protection. Red Clay has been known for its high standards and excellent educational staff. I support my schools, my teachers, and my district. The mental and physical health of my children's educators at this point is my primary concern in our return to school. Without supporting them with all that they need, we will have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Next is Ms. Christina Bartnik. Welcome, Ms. Bartnik.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Christina Bartnik. I am the proud art teacher at Cook Elementary. As a member of the specialist team, I will come in contact with close to 100 students per day once we return to in-person instruction. So what I would like to see is a further decrease in class sizes, implement a cohort A-day, B-day schedule for elementary schools for at least the second marking period, and see how it goes, and then increase social, I mean, I'm sorry, and then increase distancing between students to six feet. So teachers can move about safely, and students can stand up next to their chair when they need a stretch break. Students most likely will be seated at their desk with little movement for periods of time. Can we start with this proposed hybrid model and increase in-person time as the year progresses? I feel this is the safest option of returning to school. And my second point is information about in-person school getting to students and parents. I am concerned that students will walk back into the building and expect school as normal, but with the addition of masks and some social distancing. They should know ahead of time. They need to know what lunch will look like. Are they allowed to have a water bottle at their desk? Will there be a snack time? How will recess and other activities in their day be different? Specifically speaking to my specialist areas, they need to know that specials will most likely be taught in their homerooms, that health will be taught instead of PE when they can't go outside due to weather for their physical activities, that in music class, they will not be able to sing in the building unless they're outside, socially distanced, and that limited instruments will be able to be played inside the classroom. Our teachers, like myself, are limited to the individual supplies of the student, which up to this point with distance learning has only included paper, pencil, and crayons. And we are trying to hold their attention with those supplies. Clay programs in the building will not be experienced, and collaborative art projects will need to be on hold for this year. Parents and students need to know that there are many restrictions to the arts areas when going back in person. I know that many students look forward to art, music, PE, and library, and they thrive there in those environments. And I would rather have students prepared for what's to come than being disappointed once we are back in person in the special classes.
Thank you, Ms. Bartnik. And that concludes our public comment. Thank you very much, everyone. So we now move on to approval of the minutes. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 16, 2020 executive session?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second. This is Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Maria, can we take a roll call vote, please? Maria?
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo? Ms. Sabo?
She said yes, Maria.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And now may I have a motion to accept the September 16, 2020 minutes from the regular session?
So moved.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabo seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Another vote, please, Maria.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo? Did she say yes?
She did say yes, Maria.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we move on to action items. So the first is on a bylaws change for the facilities committee. It is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the changes to approve to change the facility committee bylaws from three community members to five community members as submitted. So is there a motion? Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second. This is Jose Matthews.
Mr. Matthews seconds. Any discussion? I would say I absolutely support this. We need community members on our committees, and I think the more, the better. Any other discussion?
Yes, this is Jose Matthews. I sit on facilities committee this year, and I am definitely grateful. I had proposed another member to this committee from the community. We've received a lot of great input from our last meeting, so definitely very thankful for this bylaw change.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anybody else? Hearing none. Maria, we will take a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews? Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo? Ms. Sabo?
She said yes, Maria.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Fantastic. So the next is the new members. So there is a motion to, it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the following community members to the facilities committee for a three-year term each. Mr. Rob Johnson, Mr. Tim Skabicki, and Mr. Corey Boudichak. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second. This is Dr. Bohm.
Dr. Bohm, second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank them for their service, and I look forward to working with them. Definitely very appreciate their input and engagement on this.
Okay, anything else? So hearing none. Maria, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Fantastic. Welcome to Mr. Johnson, Mr. Skabicki, and Mr. Boudichak. We're glad to have you on the committee. So next we go to the action items. So I'd like to pull or at least mention the donation. I think it's worth mentioning, donation. Ms. Dinnage and Ms. Karen Dinnage and Ms. Barbara Milosch are donating 100 handmade masks to our schools. So that's clearly something that obviously everybody knows that we need at this point. So I just wanted to highlight that, but otherwise, is there a motion to approve the consent action items? The action consent items?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Casper seconded. So we ought to have a vote, Maria.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
And thank you for the donation, Ms. Dinnage and Ms. Milosch. So now we move on to the superintendent report. So the floor is yours, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, members who came to join us, the two public commissioners, staff, and those who are joining us online. First, I want to take this opportunity to, again, congratulate Mrs. Kimberly Stock for receiving the honor of Delaware State Teacher of the Year. It's a huge honor for Ms. Stock and McCain High School, but more importantly, Red Clay. Thank you, Ms. Stock, for all of your hard work and effort. And just a funny story, as we participated in the announcement itself, prior to the opening of the actual ceremony, Ms. Stock mentioned that she had a 5% chance of winning. And so, you know, that, why not great odds? It was deserving that she would be named the Delaware Teacher of the Year. So again, congratulations to Ms. Kimberly Stock. We also want to acknowledge Ms. Catherine Ellis for the Ed Support Professional, Red Clay Ed Support Professional of the Year. Mrs. Ellis is a pair educator at AI High School, so we want to thank her for all of her hard work and effort and wish her good luck in the running, I guess, for this thing, Ed Support Professional of the Year. And so, as we discussed, the reopening of schools and Phase 2 of reopening, just a major success point has been this week. With our special programs, we've had the opportunity to welcome over 370 students and 260 staff members returned this week for the phase reopening for our specialized programs. That would be our early-years preschool program, our Meadowwood program, and our various autism sites across the district. I want to thank those staff members and obviously families, and more importantly, couldn't be prouder of our students, as there was a lot of angst and anxiety, much of which was expressed during public comment tonight amongst our special services staff. To see them come into the building, to see the nature of the human connections and the mask-wearing and all of the various other things that we were concerned about not come to fruition was reassuring to see. So, you know, again, thank you to our EYP for welcoming about 200 students across seven sites, staff about 150 of which are teachers, pairs, speech pathologists, OT, PT, BCBA's, which are behavior analysts, and then also school psychs, our child find team and special education coordinators, and again, K-12 autism services are serving approximately 60 students and 40 staff. So again, we just want to acknowledge the work that our special services department, under the leadership of Dr. Sarah Celestin and her team, and again, our building-level support staff, secretaries, everyone who has allowed our students with disabilities the specialized programs to get off to a good start. As mentioned, fall sports have been underway since September 28. I believe today was the first day of competition, where we had a number of our field hockey teams actually participating in competition today. So we want to thank our athletic directors, building admin, coaches, and all of those staff members who, again, understanding that our initial fall sports season was delayed, and then we had to pivot in very little time. And thank you to the leadership, again, of all of our athletic directors across all of our high schools, our coaches, for allowing our student athletes to get back to the field of play. And I do want to acknowledge, again, that some, you know, folks are wondering about fan and expectations and spectators in our stands. A lot of that has to also do with the conferences, aligning and agreeing to phase-in things, and first, really getting the logistics together around our student athletes in competition and while also addressing the requirements around capacity. It's obviously something that we continue to discuss around fan participation, but I do want to acknowledge the hard work and effort of our ADs, coaches, and also our student athletes who've been adhering to the requirements. Some exciting news that was referenced across multiple schools, just to name a few, from Stanton to HB, Conrad, Lewis, Forstoke, Linden Hill, Shortledge, Richie Cav has hosted some, as well as Dickerson, has been pop up classrooms. It's been a wonderful opportunity to reengage our students and our staff members. Each opportunity that I've been able to participate and observe, as late as yesterday, got to see a first grade lesson at Richie Elementary, where they did everything from measure pumpkins, look at the buoyancy of pumpkins. It was a wonderful opportunity again for the first grade staff at Richie, as well as our students, to come together. And then also yesterday at Shortledge Academy, watching the staff members at Shortledge Academy engage students in the second grade, Mr. Wiggins and his class, along with the other team members at Shortledge, host the pop-up classroom. And again, it's just a wonderful opportunity for our staff members and students, and more importantly, our families, to engage in authentic learning through the pop-up classroom. Also within that, you will see a newly decorated school bus. Also at our pop-up classroom sites, and this is a continuation of our new series premiering this month, which is again, aligned to student voice. This bus is an opportunity to capture student voices across all of our grade levels and grade bands. To date, obviously, we've been invested with our secondary students, but now it's also an opportunity to promote student voice amongst our young learners. And this picture just captures some of the students who have been able to lend their voice through this new project and series that's premiering this month. I also want to acknowledge the closing, although it was last week, of Hispanic Heritage Month. And thank you to all the staff members and schools throughout the district who participated and shared fun educational activities through September 15 to October 15, and again, to our Hispanic and Latino, Latino community. We celebrate that heritage. We acknowledge that heritage. And again, thank you to all of our staff members and schools throughout the district who recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. So obviously, it goes without saying that it was difficult to sit here and listen to public comment. And quite frankly, it's been difficult listening to public comment throughout the duration of this pandemic, from the time our schools closed on March 13, to us trying to get back to some semblance of redefining what normal is, because none of us really have a clear indication of that. And so as I want to first acknowledge the work of our district level team and staff, building level leadership teams, as well as our educators, our custodial staff, everyone across this district who is trying to get back to redefine what normal is in the midst of this pandemic. And it's clear, there are no easy answers. There's no one-size-fits-all remedy. I applaud, you know, the efforts of our colleagues and neighboring districts, but I can tell you, as I spend time with them, there are no easy answers and only looks as good as the paper that is printed on until you try to put it into action and application. So the work that we're doing, decisions that we're making are not in vain. They really are what safety first in mind, but really listening to the diverse stakeholders within our community to try to get us back to some semblance of normal. We are adhering to what the guidelines are for the state and maximizing that ability to social distance where feasible, understanding that six feet, whether you look at the CDC, it changed, just like someone said, within three hours ago, a new guidance comes out. And so what we've been leaning on and leaning into as a district is the Health Department's guidance, the Department of Health, for Delaware Department of Health and the Department of Education. And so why three feet is a minimum standard, that is not the standard across the district as we look to provide in-person learning for those families who chose it. So just an example, again, we'll be pictured here, and we'll continue to work and engage with our educators. As mentioned, I did spend time this week understanding that Cook has been the school that's had the most pressure because it has the most, the highest response for in-person learning from families. A picture here would be the average fourth grade classroom, where there's roughly about 16 students in this particular room. And if we looked at, you know, the social distancing requirements, it will be different than what we were used to in March 12. From wearing a mask, again, there was some consternation and hesitation about what it looked like in preschool. And they got out of the car with their mask on. Some may have been a little too big, but those adjustments were made. And it was amazing to see our students with disabilities who are differently able, where there was concern because they had sensory issues that they wouldn't be able to wear their mask. Pleasantly surprised, when you look at the reinforcement system and really allowing our educators to do what they do best, it wasn't so much of a concern. That's not to say that we're not concerned, because each day brings its own choice and host of concerns daily. So to think that we're making these decisions lightly, we're not. To think that we were willingly wanting to put our staff members in jeopardy, we're not. So we continue to work with and refine plans and understand that as a community, regardless of the survey, we know we're going to be split. That's that where families want access and want choices. And so we're in the unenviable task of trying to meet collectively everyone's needs. This is another example of a room that shows close to seven feet of social distancing, and all things aren't equal across the district as building configurations are different, as the response rate for families have been different, and pressures on various schools have been different. And so while we can look at a school like Cook and say, let's go to a cohort model, because where their pressures are, if we chose another school, you know, you might have six, five students in a particular classroom based on the in-person responses that we've had. So as a measure of trying to provide consistency and really looking at it across the district, we see just about over 168 elementary classrooms, 50 of them have fewer than 14 students in those classrooms. 92 of those classrooms have roughly about 15 to 19. And as indicated, there are about additional classrooms that have some pressure on those classrooms, such as Cook, where we went to meet with them to really look at not dropping numbers from four classrooms to sections to incorporating a fifth classroom so that we can maximize those numbers around social distance. And again, this is just another example of a classroom of what a traditional classroom would look like in any particular school as it relates to, you know, returning to school in a COVID pandemic environment. This would be a secondary school. Obviously, with the cohort model, we're drastically reduced with those numbers, so half of those seats wouldn't be warranted. So you would be really looking at a situation where there will be an empty seat between each student, providing approximately about seven and a half feet of social distance. Obviously, this slide acknowledges, and from what we heard during public comment, are the pressures that we see at Cook Elementary. And again, we are anticipating that large number, Cook had the highest percentage of in-person. We've met with the building principal on several occasions and administration, but also met with a group of teacher leaders today to not only hear their concerns, but to also put remedies and things in place. And what we've seen a lot at our elementary schools are the fact that they use tables and not desks. And so one of the fixes, obviously, in working with them was to replace the tables that they have in their classrooms to put desks in place, understanding that it will provide a higher level of flexibility. And just as a facility upgrades, obviously, we have Plexiglas and things, you know, barriers for the secretarial staff as they interact with the general public. Again, cleaning and sanitizing. And the idea around the echo cleaner was one that was at the request of our facilities department to provide a cleaning solution. And because our custodial staff routinely use that, there's a lot of confusion around the labeling of that. That is based on the undiluted form of that versus which diluted, which our buildings don't have access to. Undiluted cleaning products. And again, we'll continue to look through that through our facilities department in terms of what would be adequate cleaning supplies since we got so much pushback on the eco-friendly cleaning. Just as it relates to PPE, as I shared last week, we do have an abundance of PPE. It's just a matter of engaging with school nurses to understand what's available. For example, at Vault, Vault has over 1,200 available masks, 4,500 gloves, additional PPE is available. Conrad, for example, has over 2,000 masks available and 15,000 gloves. So we do have, we will release that tomorrow for staff and the staff bulletin so that they can be aware of what's available within their particular school. And it's not an issue for us, per se, not to have access to ongoing personal protective equipment for our staff. Again, so we have over 2,000 wall-mounted hand sanitizer stations and things put up in classrooms. And a lot of it is practice, you know, ensuring that we are wearing masks and hygiene doesn't replace and won't replace, you know, any type of other product or protocol that we put in place. It ultimately really truly does boil down to hand hygiene and mask wearing. As discussed last week, really looking at the ASR requirements around air quality and filtration, starting that process four hours before students would enter a building and cycling their air at least four times every hour. We also wanted to announce that there continues to be free COVID testing for students in this COVID-19 environment and also COVID-19 self-screening to really assure that you're making the right decisions around the health, the safety, and well-being by following those tips to make sure that you self-screen, really checking for signs of fever and or chills, sore throats and such. We would ask again, stay home if you're sick, complete the COVID-19 self-screening every morning, making sure that we practice, again, their proper hygiene, sing happy birthday and wash your hands and not allow ourselves to get complacent, because it's very easy to get complacent in this environment, especially when we see everything around us open. And especially, you know, you can go to a restaurant, you can get your hair done, get your nails done, go to the gym. There are a number of things that unfortunately, I think, allows for us to let our dogs down. So it's very important again to ensure, especially in a school and library setting, that we proper, practice proper hygiene and again, wear a mask at all times. And so that guidance will be again put out and we will continue to reinforce that. And if you have any kinds of concerns, especially as it relates to personal protective equipment or the health guidance, we ask that you communicate with our school nurses, who have been, again, well-versed in health and setup of protocols, but more importantly, know what access and developments in the personal protective equipment within each of our schools. And again, lastly, here's an opportunity to get free COVID testing. So please pay attention to the various websites and what we post as well in terms of updates on opportunities for the community to participate in the COVID testing. And again, the state has adhered to and demonstrated that there is a minimum requirement. We also want to be mindful that school choice window is open. We will have virtual sessions this year. On October 27, from 6:00 to 8:00, application opens for choice for next year on November 2. So you can go to redclayschools.com for additional details, again, for those who are interested in choice options. And the three feet is a minimum. And ironically enough, on the call today, continuing to seek guidance and clarity around the Department of Health recommendations, which was attributed to the American Academy of Pediatrics around the distancing. And while it's a minimum, obviously, that's not what we're settling for. And it's also dependent, again, on building square footage and how we will support schools, so whether that would be rearranged furniture or provide them with things such as desks where they can use a table. This was communicated last week, just in terms of, again, examples of where we can swap a particular classroom. Based on the numbers, we would be able to adjust that additional square footage. But to date, across K-12 schools, there have only been 17 cases attributed to students who have been in-person across the state of Delaware. And then, those cases aren't attributed to schools. What was communicated was, in many instances, is communicated or contributed to the fact that folks might be bar-pulling without masks, family gatherings and things that are happening within a community, or again, sporting events inconvenience. So for those school districts that have had COVID, where they may have had individuals who have tested positive in an in-person setting, the three feet would have managed minimum, but more importantly, adhering to social distance beyond that. They haven't seen any spread or risk of spread within school. And again, that through a conversation with the Department of Health. What about when students eat meals? Again, that is a minimum of six feet without a mask, because students would have to take off their mask. That wouldn't even be sufficient for snack times or hydration breaks if students need to take hydration breaks. Again, because that is their taking the mask off, that information would be again adhering to no less than six feet, because again, they will be without a mask. And again, what social distancing looks like in classroom, this information was shared last week. It is dependent upon buildings and numbers and obviously availability of resources and square footage. But again, we're working closely primarily with Cook, who has the highest rate of in-person requests, to really look at what that social distancing looks like for Cook Elementary in particular. We continue to engage with all of our schools. Visitation to Marlbrook, who interestingly enough have more than adequate enough space to social distance. So again, it is dependent upon individual school buildings in terms of availability of space and how we're working with them around the social distancing requirements. And so I'm sure I have a lot of questions from board members. You've heard a lot, you know, we continue to engage the community. I continue to make my role games with schools, our building leaders. This isn't anything that we're trying to pull or shy away from. I will say, in our ability to be transparent, because while many may say that, you know, it is six feet, I know folks are not all, you know, adhering to that in essence. And this is, it's a struggle. And it's a struggle trying to get us back to a sense of normalcy. So in full transparency, we were saying and indicating that is the minimum requirements and guideline. And not that we're basing our decisions solely off that, we're basing it off of what the resource has in the building to maximize those opportunities to expand upon social distancing requirements. But that concludes my report. I will take any questions if one of you may.
So do any board members have questions? If so, can you let me know and we'll order who goes?
I do.
Did you say you do, Ashley? Okay, Ms. Sabo does. I don't know Ms. Dr. Bohm or Mr. Matthews if you do.
I have a question.
Could you text me and then we'll order? We get feedback in the room, so it would be helpful to know if you do. If you could text me, I can then put you on after Ms. Sabo, okay? Dr. Bohm and Mr. Matthews. Okay, so go ahead, Ms. Sabo.
I just had a question around the numbers for student count of online meetings for specifically elementary.
And so roughly, it's about 16, 535 in terms of split, approximately, just in terms of, but that count is dependent upon grade level and how we're looking at those numbers. So likely, you will see an AB cohort model for online, because again, no additional staff has come with how we're trying to provide supports to in-person and online. So our schools have been making do with resources, really looking at staff, how we can look at other additional teaching staff, support staff within the building, and really looking at an AB cohort model. So based on those online in-person numbers, because we heard our community loud and clear that they wanted support from Red Clay teachers, and we're providing that support from a Red Clay teacher. So in essence, you will have that core content instruction being delivered by a Red Clay teacher and the staff. Many of our builders are really looking at the online kind of a mornings group or online, and then an afternoon group to ensure that that instruction is being delivered. One by a Red Clay staff, because we celebrated their education, wasn't the option that I indicated that they wanted. And that's the best way equitable to give me support, the numbers for those who are on the road.
And then should it happen that, please, you go back down in things, go back remote, will the numbers be evened out? So the teacher had 13 students and the online had 13, will still say that?
And so I will first say this, and make the public aware of the state, as they just indicated in the shared last week, a new metric, which is the percent test positive, are also looking at a new dashboard that they'll be releasing next week to really look at the phase. Ultimately, the state determines what phase we're in. We don't have any say over that particular phase. But with that being said, you know, if we had to go to a full-on remote learning environment, then you would stay with the remote staff that you have.
Excuse me, Mr. Green. Excuse me, Mr. Green.
For, but as clear indication of the now.
Excuse me.
Again, the state ultimately determines what phase we're in.
Mr. Green?
Mr. Green.
We could go back to what phase.
So are you done, Sabo? Okay, so next is Mr. Jose Matthews has questions.
Ms. Thompson.
Jose. Yeah, Kath Kathy, it sounds like Maria's is has something she needed to say.
Can all of you please speak into the mic because the audience could not hear Mr. Green or Ms. Sabo.
God, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can see back in the room if my computer mic is on.
Okay, so next is Mr. Jose Matthews who has questions.
Thank you, President Thompson. So Drell, my first question is in regards to the online environment and the class sizes and the online environment. Can we get a little bit more information on what the expectation is in terms of class sizes for the online classrooms? I know that at the last board meeting, our special board meeting, there was a lot of really great questions about class sizes. And from my understanding and from my notes, we were told that class sizes would be pretty consistent. Can can we get a little bit more information on that? Because I'm hearing that, you know, that online teachers are going to be looking at quite a dramatic increase.
And so that's why I was just referencing Mr. Matthews, the fact that we're looking at cohort models. Because again, the number of students and their teachers that would be available to support in person. Puts those who are in online in a predicament where our teachers would have to have split numbers. In terms of a AM group and particularly a PM group in terms of online supports. And so those numbers are reflective again of the choice that many of our families have indicated in terms of. Those needing and wanting online and then supporting that with red clay staff members. And I may have gotten kicked out, so do forgive me if you don't see me on the screen at this point, hopefully you can still hear me. Can you still hear me?
Yeah, I could still hear you.
Okay, my computer died, so I do apologize. So again, those numbers are reflective of the choice and then obviously we're balancing those out across the grade levels in each of our schools.
So do we anticipate, I'm hearing from some.
Can't hear you, can't hear you, Mr. Matthews.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I I'm hearing from some educators and our board has received a number of emails. That that some are looking up at upwards of forty-four students per per classroom. Is is that expected to level out at some point?
And so as we look at additional support, and yes, we are identifying other staff members who can support the virtual online learning as well as those who are supporting. In-person learning as we look at staffing across the board where certain buildings may not have a higher level of pressure. And putting additional supports in those buildings that do.
Now, I also wanted to know, when we do the calculation for class size waiver, are the online rosters for for the classrooms? Are are those included within our that calculation? How is that working now?
So it's interesting and thank you for bringing it up. We raised that question with the state today. And the question was at this point, because of the way that things have been put in the governor's modification. That they would relegate that to a local board decision, when in actuality, it's, you know, the state regulation that warrants the the class size waiver. And so we're still waiting on clarity from the state, just in terms of what that looks like in a virtual online environment. In terms of how the state would consider us to calculate a remote learning environment versus. An in-person environment relative to the class size waiver. So that question was raised with the state today and we're waiting on clarity around it.
Perfect, and then so my next couple of questions, I I want to have a little bit more of an understanding of the structure of the day. And I want to know a little bit more about teachers and teacher coverage. When teachers are going to educators, I should say, are going to be having lunch breaks. And when what their relief will look like during the day? Can you can you give me a little bit more insight in the community, a little bit more insight as to how that will work?
And so obviously within our schools, depending on the number of grade levels, the number of sections, they they ultimately look at how they schedule lunch, get lunches in the timeframe with the social distancing requirements. But what I will say is this, and I shared with a group of educators today. That our educators need to give themselves grace to understand that we're not going to walk back into a building and things are going to look. Systemically the same way that they've looked before. Again, we have to prioritize and need that, yeah, you may need to get a break and schedule a break within the timeframe of your reading block. You may need to have the opportunity to give students a hydration break. You may need the opportunity to, you know, differentiate and really teach a lesson that may not necessarily be allowed. We have to be mindful of where our community is as it relates to whether that's the secondary level or the elementary level. To understand that students and families are coming from different backgrounds, so we have to reacclimate children. As we've heard, a number of our educators have that concern, so we have to give ourselves the grace and the opportunity to really just reconnect. Because students have been out of school for seven months, so we're working with our buildings, our schools, our records to create the schedules. That are conducive to obviously their student needs, staff needs within the building. And again, there is flexibility in how we really look at, really adjusting and looking at those schedules to ensure that we're not putting anyone in compromising position. But more importantly, we're doing our best to provide, you know, core content supports and education in this environment.
Thank you, Drell. And then I also wanted to go back to the slide that you had in terms of overviewing the sanitation protocols. And the different chemical cleaners that we're going to be utilizing. Or and that we're going to be having our educators utilize. Are are we going to be providing any form of additional training to make sure that they're utilizing these chemicals correctly? And then also I wanted to know in terms of supply and how in terms of how supply is going. For for the chemical that we selected, are there going to be other alternatives?
And so again, the the question around the echo cleaner was around the fact that there was a request. For staff members to have a cleaning product. And because that's the one that our buildings custodians use that are familiar with, that was the one that was provided. It wasn't mandatory that teachers use that particular supply, it was granted to them because it was a request. And since then, you know, there was questions around the label and the labeling. The chemical compound within it, SDS sheets and forms. So there's been a lot of confusion around that. Training and support was offered if those who wanted to use it needed it. As well as any kind of PPE gloves and or goggles if they so chose to want to wear them. If they wanted to use that particular product. We have no problems pulling that product, again, because it wasn't anything that we mandated as a district, it's something that we readily use. Throughout the district currently. So again, our facilities department continues to really look at again, health and safety protocols in our buildings. And since it was such a concern, we have no problem pulling the product.
And then amongst, oh, my apologies, I think I'm hearing feedback.
Not here, you're good here.
Okay, great, great. So on the lines of sanitation. And and I appreciate, you know, the district really trying to accommodate that specific request. But I I I wanted to know in terms of regular and ongoing sanitation in between classrooms. And I and in between and periods and things, I I that will still be happening and occurring, correct?
Yes, more so now than ever, as it was indicated. I know hard touch surfaces and areas get wiped down more frequently down than they ever have. And so our building level staff does support that, obviously we have additional over two thousand sanitizing stations placed strategically throughout buildings and within classrooms. That does not mean that we should substitute for hand washing. But our custodial staff will continue to do, you know, cleaning on a routine basis as it was required by the Rio P School. Delaware Department of Education cleaning protocol.
Thank you, Drell, and that's all the questions that I have currently as of now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews, and now Dr. Bohm has questions, so the floor is yours, Dr. Bohm.
Evening, everyone, it's nice to be with you all. I do have a number of questions that I would like to ask Superintendent Green. But sitting through public comment and looking at all of the emails and text messages and phone calls that we've been receiving. Since last Thursday. I really think what I need to say, instead of asking all the questions, which I still will ask. Is that we have heard from the president of RCEA. We have heard from the vice president of RCEA. We have heard from the social committee chair from RCEA. We have heard from many members of the executive committee of RCEA. We have heard from numerous educators from across the district. And they are pleading with us to create a working environment. That is more satisfactory and conducive to student learning. So I don't know how, and I don't have any of this written out because I was trying to write it down while I was listening to public comment. But I'm not sure how we as a board with faced with all of this information. Can just continue to barrel on ahead as if everything is okay? When everything does not appear to be okay. I mean, we have heard repeatedly, we saw the survey that RCEA sent out last week. Where people have very real, very legitimate concerns. I have a seventeen year old who has been in Red Clay since kindergarten. I have a fourteen year old who has been in Red Clay since kindergarten. I know this district, I know the educators, I've been on this board, I know the administrators, I talk to people. People, I've told Superintendent Green, people show up on my doorstep with their masks on, they want to talk to me, they're out on their walk, they come bang on my door. We have real concerns and we have to keep in mind, and I keep saying this is not my phrase, but working. Our conditions for our educators are the learning conditions for our students and the two are inseparable. They they're simply inseparable, they're one in the same, we have different words for them, but they're the same environment. So I think it behooves us as a district to really sit down and say, hey, how can we make this better? How can we make teaching be more effective and more efficient? What can we, what you know, what can we do? And that's really the statement I want to make, and I know I'm only one board member and it seems like sometimes. There are one or two board members who try and move this board in a direction that is more conducive to learning. That does inspire more safety for our students. But two members of this board cannot do that by ourselves. So that is my, you know, that is what I really feel like I need to get off my chest. Our educators are crying out for a different way. And it is incumbent upon us as the governance body of the largest school district in Red Clay to do something about it. All right, so that's 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 my two cents, and then I do have some questions, always have my questions. So I did appreciate, I know I reached out to Superintendent Green earlier and asked the question about. Providing data to the board and the community about the number of students returning per returning to school and what our class sizes look like. So I know Superintendent Green, I believe it was two meetings ago, you actually gave us an amazingly wonderful breakdown of what that looked like. So you talked about the numbers at Cook and North Star because I think they have the highest rates of return in person. And then you went down and I I believe you said back then that like Marlbrook was our line. Where you began to see more people or more families and students not wanting to return. So I was wondering, I know I asked for those numbers earlier, do you have, do you have those numbers for each school?
And so I I do, and they're a little bit more detailed than obviously looking at raw percentages. And so as they continue to change, because as the deadline closed last week, there were still a number of outstanding families that schools had to continue to. Basically. Connect with to determine what those options, although we did default to remote. We still have to account for every child in Red Clay, so it still conducive or coming upon us. At the building level to continue to reach out to those families who we haven't had a response. So what we are and as we did today, we finalized a lot of those numbers. It really looked at averages of classrooms and as previously shared, and as many staff members had alluded to. You know, our numbers aren't where other districts may have proclaimed professor proclaim where their numbers would be. We looked at honoring those parents' requests and then ultimately putting a plan in place to ensure that again. Not getting hung up on the minimum, but really providing avenues to where we can honor as broad of a social distancing requirement as we can, depending on the given school. So what I will do, I'll work with and I'll make sure the board has a report. With those particular numbers again, because they're a little bit more nuanced and just me giving you a raw percentage of the percentage of in-person versus those who. Are choosing remote and then a very, very small percentage of families who continue to select accelerate education as an opportunity for their children.
Okay, thank you very much. My second question, and I think Mr. Matthews asked about this a little bit, was I wanted to inquire about the day to day operations of our students. Entering and exiting the schools and also what that looks like for our educators. Like I said, my kids have been in Red Clay since they were in kindergarten. And I have been into every single classroom that my students have ever been in, and I know that the morning is chaotic. And I know the afternoon is chaotic when kids are getting their books and their coats and their notes and all of that. So could you describe a little bit what that would look like at the end of the day? Because usually there's a mad rush to the cubbies or to the lockers and there's a lot of young people congregating. So how is that, are we going to have one student go at a time or what are we going to do?
So obvi- it would be phased phases and a lot of what you just described will not be in a part of the new reality. So the idea of cubbies and there will be limited locker access and things of that nature so that we can monitor the flow of traffic. And student movement throughout the buildings, it will be a lot more structured. As it relates to that, and again, that's just based on the nature of where we find ourselves. So I know our default goes to what we were used to. But the reality is that used to is no longer, whether that would be really pulling students to, you know, a tier two for a small group lesson. That's not ideal in this COVID environment, and I think that that's the adjustment that we all have to come to grips with. For those of you who might be familiar with the work of Dr. Nadine Burke Harris. I listened to a podcast that she was on and one of the big things that she expressed is, in this environment, we have to change our expectations. And I think the reality of it is we expect school to look like what it used to. And we all have to come to the grips, so regardless of what plan we roll out, school won't look that way. And so how do we stagger a dismissal? We know that we have, majority of our schools have a higher rate of car lines. And so how we brainstorming, we're for Brandymont Springs, for example, you know, we're connecting with the county. To see if Dale Castle Park could be an opportunity for us to partner with the county to really use the resources that we have available to us to get creative. Around arrivals and dismissals. So this notion of just going to my cubby will be very much strategic in how, you know, we we put students in place to remain safe. But also limit the free movement that I think a lot of people have been used to, and that's something that we have to do as a safety protocol. Whether that's movement through, you know, adjustment and staggering bell schedules as students move throughout the building. Obviously, looking at lunch is a lot different. Where some of our schools have elected to use desks as, you know, spaces to eat lunch rather than the tables, because that allows us to maximize the space. And so there there are different things and processes that we have in place. Not only by requirement, but obviously by the nature of the reopening of schools. Whether that would be now or in January will continue to be the case because again, we have to move and act differently in schools. Based on where we are rather than where we were in March.
So I I appreciate that and thank you for that response. What I'd like to know, and I I know you can't give me this number tonight, but I would like to have some type of analysis so we can see. What time of, what amount of time from content teaching will be reduced because of the new normal that we'll have to experience? So if we will have to stagger, you know, cubby time or dismissal, et cetera. What amount of time will be taken away from actually teaching content? I think that analysis would be something great going forward, so over the next month or two, I'd love if you could provide us with that information. The other thing is, could you tell us a little bit about what recess would look like for our K through fifth graders, please?
Actually, it would be cohorting, you would want to keep groups of students together as as best they could be, really looking at structured activities to monitor, you know, what students are doing. You know, one of the examples that actually, you know, the 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 group football game that a lot of our students may have been used to will will. Won't be the case, you know, it's how do we structure recess to be that opportunity? For them to go out to to have a break, but ultimately understand the nature of where we currently are. You know, mask will be, you know, worn. So again, really looking at the safety requirements of where we find ourselves. It'll look very different than what it was, you could still, you know, potentially play the kickball game. Per se, but then you got to look at the hand hygiene that would be required. As a result of before you go out and when you come in. And so those protocols will be things where it will be routine and should be built into any daily schedule. As students move about the building at any point of transition. It needs to be a hand hygiene opportunity throughout the course of that day, and you know, recess would be noted.
Okay, thank you. The other question I wanted to revisit or actually follow up on my remarks about the partitions. Or the dividers in K through five classrooms that I talked about last week. I received emails from educators. Indicating that they were told that after my comments last week, they were. Informed by their school level administrators to cut the partitions. Down, so the partition was like this initially, where people couldn't see, now they're being told to cut the partition so students can. Look over the partition, and I wanted to know if you, if, if that guidance came from the district. Office, if you were aware of that, and, and I had actually. Provided the suggestion that we could return the partitions and either get our money back, or we could return the partitions and ask for. Transparent partitions, so students could see through them and educators could see the students. I just want to see where we, where we were with that.
And again, so at our. EYPP, the younger grades, they are transparent partitions, especially as it relates to staff members that may have to do one-on-one supports. Partitions are not required, they were requested and asked by some staff members because they felt that. It would provide them with an extra layer. Of comfort and support, and the biggest layer of comfort and support that you can actually get is wearing a mask. And so in that instance, if that directive was given, it was to promote line of sight. Because if a student still has a mask on, in that particular case. While again, it might allow them to see. It is still provided them with line of sight, but you're still wearing a mask, and the mask is the most critical aspect of. Ensuring safety in that particular situation.
So did we actually see if we could get our money back?
What's that?
Get our money back, could we return the partitions?
And, and I don't know if there were ordered at individual school levels, or if there was a district level purchase, again, I could check with our facilities department, I know many of the. Things that we have used at the younger grades. Were actually built in-house.
Okay, because I think we could all agree that wearing a mask is important and essential. However, once we cut down a partition, it's no, no longer useful, so then we don't need to use it anymore. That was one of the questions, thank you. The other thing I've been told, and the board has received emails about this, is that educators have been told they're not allowed to take pictures of their classrooms. And I, I wanted to know if there is, if this was correct information we were receiving, or whether or not. They are being told that, and if so, why they're being told that?
I can't answer what are educators informing you of, I know I haven't told any educators not to take any pictures of their classrooms. As they've raised concerns, I've actually gone out to buildings to help them troubleshoot. And really look at our schools, define remedies to concerns within their classrooms, i.e. today. Really looking at cook and going in to determine that tables weren't the best option. And we can provide them with desks relative to the concerns that were raised in their classrooms, so I don't know what the source. Of those comments were, or why educators feel that way, but. There hasn't been no directive coming from me telling educators not to take a picture of their classroom.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to know last week, I think the number was at a hundred and sixty-eight. For personnel educators who had requested that they could work remotely, and I wanted to know where we were with that number, had it increased?
And I don't have that number offhand. I don't know if Ms. Smith, you stood up, I don't know if you're taking a stretch break, or is that something that you wanted to speak to?
Mike?
You, you would have to come up to the mic, Ms. Smith. And Ms. Smith is our HR director, so. I don't have them on rock here, Dr. Bone, but Ms. Smith is volunteering to share that information.
Thank you.
I would estimate that we have perhaps another twenty to twenty-five.
An additional twenty to twenty-five from last, an additional twenty to twenty-five from last week.
Yes.
So we have a number that's close to around approximately two hundred?
Yes, it's approaching two hundred.
Okay, and do we know what? What number has been given permission to work remotely and what number has not?
And she's thinking, and I would say rather than. Put on a spot like that, that would be information that we would have to get back to the board.
Okay, thank you. And with that in mind, can we talk a little bit more about our plans for substitute teachers?
And so we continue to work with ESS, we are working with our buildings to ensure that they have a minimum number of subs to support. Within there, we continue to work with our vendors to ensure that we have that support in place.
Okay, and. I do want to just say that I have heard that Superintendent Green, you have visited our schools and people have definitely been appreciative of that, and I want to say that. I personally think that you do listen to concerns with the community, and I, and I appreciate that as a mother. And I appreciate that as, as an educator as well. And it seems like the district is making a diligent and sincere effort to create six feet distancing. And I would like to ask, why can't we commit to that fully? As in a policy that we would adhere to?
And so again.
I get that we have.
Are the board to have us direct ourselves to go to another plan based on the in-person response from families who have made a choice. And where we don't have. Exact square footage across all of our schools to ensure. As to what that would actually look like, so again, you, you know, we, we are basing it off of. What the state requirements are. Based on the responses of what family responses are. And that's how we're working the plan to provide in-person support and learning. Obviously, I take my directors from the board, you made a vote last week. Should the board feel otherwise to put that in place, then that's the board's prerogative, but where I stand and where our team stands right now, we're basing those numbers off of. What family selected, what the choices were. What's the available square footage in our buildings and ensuring that we are within the recommended guidelines. That have been. Recommended by the Department of Health and Delaware Department of Education.
Thank you so much for that, so. What I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm mistaken. Is that although in our hearts, we may want to commit to the most social distancing. Possible to keep our educators and our students safe, we simply don't have the, the building capacity or the physical infrastructure to do that. So although we say we would like to maintain as much social distancing as we, as we can. We can't create policy around that because physically, we don't have the infrastructure to uphold such a policy. Which means that no matter what and how sincere our intentions are. Ultimately, we may not be able to keep that six feet of distancing, and we may on many, 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 many occasions. Have people three feet apart head to head, meaning that when they walk around, there's less than three feet of distance between them. Would that be?
I don't necessarily think that's what I said, and that's what you heard, I apologize, what I'm saying is. All things are equal across the district, we've listened and honoring parent responses. In a number of cases where we may have, it would require a lot of purging. Of things such as the cubbies that you referenced, where schools may still have cubbies within the classroom that takes up square footage. There are, you know, still furniture and things that are within specific classrooms, that again, that we're diligently going about. Throughout of our, all of our schools. Helping them purge some of the things that are within classrooms to maximize this.
So we would need to restructure what our physical classrooms look like. In order to ensure at a higher level or a higher rate, that we would have more. Adequate and more safe social distancing.
A difference. And a, in a desk, for example, again, a lot of our elementary schools in particular. Use tables. You know, some varying from six-foot tables to four-foot tables. To kidney tables, to different things that they were using, and. Again, all things equal, every classroom would have an individualized student desk, but that's just not the way that our buildings. Have been structured, so. Again, we're maximizing the space based on the resources that we have.
Thank you so much, and I just have one or two final questions, can we go back in the slides to the very first slide you showed us with the two gentlemen with the string?
No, it's later.
Yes, this one, is this Cook Elementary School?
No.
No, and in this picture to, I'm looking at the left, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I see like ten or eleven desks. Do you mind sharing which school this is, or is that? Information I can't ask about?
I'm not saying you can't access it, I'm just trying to, I don't have, we have fourteen elementary schools. So I'm trying to.
So just because Cook seems to be the school that's at a very high, at our highest capacity, do we have any pictures of Cook? I'm just, I'm just totally being curious.
There are no pictures of Cook in this presentation, though.
Alright, well, thank you very much, and I'd love to go visit Cook, so if any educators would like to invite me into your building, I'd be happy to come. Or any other school as well, thank you so much Superintendent Green, I appreciate your responses to the questions I asked this evening.
Anything else? Yes, what, Mr. Wilson?
Would I be wrong to?
Speak into, speak into it?
Can you hear me now? Okay. Would I be wrong to be telling parents? Some of the parents to go visit the principal or go to the school?
Would you be wrong, I mean, I.
I mean, because they're asking me some of the same questions about, you know.
Parents have access to the building level administrator, so if you want to tell them to contact the school, that wouldn't be a problem, tell them the parents to contact the governor.
Sounds good to me, I, I've been into a couple of schools. And the principals are rearing and ready to go. I appreciate that. Now. I'm just throwing it out there. Because, you know, I heard. Couple of teachers talk tonight about, you know, fooling with chemicals. And getting burns. I'm sure there's some MSDA sheets out there. That they can talk to, the head custodian, whatever. Because the way I see it, that. Some of the teachers might have asked, they want to, you know, be extra clean. You know, helping clean their room up a little bit or whatever, I don't know, the protocol yet. But, you know, just to get teachers that want to help, and then. If some are having problems, I just want to make sure that. They can communicate. With the right people. That can correct the problem.
And that would be our facilities department who's working with our builders to address that problem.
Okay, so. Then I know, I'm sure Mr. Aaron. Can make sure that happened. Alright, so. That's good, and then. You know, since March. There's been so many issues. I just want to be able to see the teacher association. And our district administration. Be able to work together. It's hard to understand since March that we have so many issues and. You're hearing so many people say that they can't get answers, or they're not privy to the answers. That we can have a nice cohesive relationship to help get these schools up and running. So I don't know, you know, being a union man and big time shop store and dealing with hundreds of people. I'm wondering if the union is giving their constituents. The right answers to let us know that we're trying to have a harmonious. Relationship in Red Clay to get things moving again, I'm gonna tell you right now, I, I'm sure with the. Way the weather's going to be, that there's going to be some issue with flu and this, that, and the other. But we have to move forward. So we have to take all the precautions, and as far as I can see. I see Red Clay is. Set. With the hand sanitizers, they're doing everything that I see in big corporations is doing the same thing. You know, to make it safe, and we all want the children to be safe. We want the teachers to be safe. We want administrators to be safe, we want everybody to be safe, but look, we have a pandemic, and let me tell you. I feel we're making out a lot better than the folks in the early nineteen hundreds. So we just got to work together, but we have to move forward, and Ms. Green, I, I have to commend you and our staff. That you guys are. Doing a great job. And I really appreciate it. And then we are able to offer. Every family, whether they want to be home. Whether they want to be on Zoom classes, the. Or in this classroom. So I think we're doing everything possible to move this thing forward. I feel we just got to work a little harder. And we got to give a little bit, and everybody got to work together. So I, I just want to commend Red Clay, keep up the good work. And teachers, we're all on your side. People that work in the classrooms. Custodians, they've been going hard at it since March. We commend them on one end, then we seem like we battle them on the other end. But I, I am very thankful what I see going on in Red Clay, and I just want to say that. Take off one more time.
Thank you. I mean, I, I obviously, there's nothing for me to respond to, other than the fact that. We are committed to working with our teachers, with our staff members, our students, and our families.
Yeah, and I, are you done, Mr. Wilson? Are you going to say anything, Mr. Casper?
I, I just wanted to say something, I have been. This past week, we have been, once again. Flooded with emails, and I am truly, truly troubled that teachers believe they were not listened to. I feel like this board, and I know for sure I. Absolutely without a doubt, listened to each and every person that wrote to us, and we received. Respond, we received emails from over two hundred and fifty-five individual people, and some wrote more than once, so there were more than that. We've had teachers on all of the committees that we've had on reopening. I have gone to schools, I still go to schools, I was in Cook on Monday, I was at EYPP. And Meadowwood and Forest Oak on Tuesday. I mean, we listen to teachers. I talk to them, I call them up, I try to schedule meetings with them. The RCA often has coffees, I often attend the coffees to talk about the teachers' issues. So it truly troubles me that the teachers. Believe that this board did not listen to them, because to me, the only evidence of that is that we arrived at different conclusions. As a board, we have to listen to the entire community. All of the stakeholders, as at least one person mentioned tonight, and those stakeholders are students. They are teachers, and they are the community members. And many of our community members, as well as many of our teachers, have indicated that they want to get back to school. And I do believe that the, I know the administration is working very hard. They're listening to each and every concern, they're trying to deal with it. So it truly troubles me because I think everyone knows. It's so obvious that every educator in our district is critical to the success of our district. And our educators are one of the reasons that Red Clay is as good as it is. And we have an entire community that we need to deal with. And I know, I know I, and I fully believe that this entire board listens a lot to everyone, and that includes the students. It includes the teachers and the educators, and it includes all the members of the communities, I, I go to PTAs, I was there last night. You know, with Mr. Gold or and Mr. Bastianelli. So, and I've been to a lot of PTA meetings, I've been listening and listening and listening. And I don't know how to listen any better, and I don't know why people would think we aren't listening, other than we've come to a conclusion. Based on what our community has wanted, that schools are reopening and we're doing it in this hybrid or this remote and in-person format, I don't want to get into a debate about whether it's hybrid or whether it's not. So we listen, and I will continue to listen, and I am going to continue to visit schools at Cook on Monday. I did go into a lot of classrooms, Mrs. Ennis was kind enough to take me around and show me a lot of the classrooms. A lot of the stuff is being taken out of the schools. It, and, and there, there were no, the desks were not three feet within each other. I was at North Star on Thursday before our board meeting, and a lot of stuff had to be cleared out, but it was. I was at North Star on Thursday before our board meeting, and a lot of stuff had to be cleared out, but it was the same kind of thing. EYP, I, I spoke to the teachers, I spoke to the educators, a lot of them, I spoke to them at Forest Oak, and everybody who had gone back was very comfortable with the processes that were in place, with the PPE that was in place, with the procedures that was in, that were in place. And so we do listen, and we do inquire, and we do try to find out. I believe this pandemic has taken so much from our society, and I believe a lot of it is creating fear and anxiety, and of course, the political situation is overly polarized, and I think that's a problem as well, but we listen, we absolutely listen, and I find it really troubling that teachers are thinking that we aren't listening, because we value each and every one of our educators. And I know I do, and I know the district does, and I know this entire board does. So thank you, Mr. Green, I appreciate all that Red Clay is doing, and I appreciate the continued effort to respond to all the concerns that are raised.
And again, this isn't amazing, while I would say thank you to the board for acknowledging the work, but this is the work that we have to do. So it's, it's not about acknowledging, you know, we're, we're committed to supporting our schools, we're submitted, we're committed to supporting our diverse community. So while I, I can say, I appreciate you acknowledging that. There's a lot of work to be done, even with the best plan in this environment. And so there will continue to be challenges that, that lie ahead, and I will commit myself, and again, our staff is committed to working with all of our stakeholders as we continue to move forward.
Okay, so now we move on to items submitted by the board, and I think, again, we need to order ourselves. Dr. Bohm and Mr. Matthews, please text me if you have anything that you want to add, and I'll put you in the rotation as well. Is there anyone in the room that wants to? I know I have a couple of committee reports, and I know Dr. Bohm wants to. Mr. Matthews, please let me know if you want to too. So I'll go first, and then Dr. Bohm, and then if Mr. Matthews, okay, and then Mr. Matthews, okay? So I did attend the RCEF meeting on February fourteenth. It was the first RCE, RCEF meeting since schools closed. Mr. Green talked about the remote, the, 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 the school plan and the beginning of school. The, the RCEA was talking about how we were transitioning to hybrid. The RCEF gave a lot of kudos to Mr. Green. They recognized that it's very difficult in the times of the pandemic. I think they were really considering whether or not they were soliciting, going to solicit from vendors at this time. And one thing I did not know, but the RCEF was very involved with the virtual graduations, and every graduating senior got a cake. And they put an ad in the news journal acknowledging the contribution. So the RCEF is really working hard for our students to provide other things for our students, and they came through yet again. I also attended the Delaware School Boards Association meeting on October seventh, and we had a lot of business to discuss. The big issue is, they, we talked a lot about the general assembly and what was going on. That was, of course, before the lawsuit was settled. So there was a lot of discussion about funding and all the bills that had died. They talked about the known changes in the general assembly to who is leading, leaving, for instance, the education committees, and who might be gaining chairmanships in those committees. So we talked a lot about that. We talked about, a lot about the, the lawsuit with Governor Carney, but as I mentioned, that's before at least the one piece of it was settled, so that was interesting. They talked about needing additional funding and support for technology and those who need IT. We also talked about the Juul lawsuit, and I know that's something that this board still needs to vote on, about whether or not we are going to join that. I know Mr. Green sent around, again, the information from the Juul lawsuit, because we talked about that last time, Mr. Casper may want to add something here. But the Juul lawsuit is basically a lawsuit that is happening by a lot of the, against the manufacturers of Juul, the, the, the electronic cigarettes, and many of school districts are joining into it, there is no cost to do so. There could be some work by our CFO, so, from Ms. Florae, to determine damages, if that, if it gets to that kind of point. But I know we're gonna have to vote on that, and Mr. Casper, you may want to add something on the Juul lawsuit, since you're on the Board of Directors.
Sure, so hello, okay, the Juul lawsuit is a joint effort throughout the boards. It basically is a win-win, I mean, there's really no, other than the fact that it would cost a little bit of, of Ms. Florae's time, possibly, but it looks like, with this class action lawsuit, in the event, it's just like any other class action lawsuit that we've seen, you know, against the tobacco companies and so forth. The Juul vaping or electronic cigarette company has kind of marketed their product towards younger people, teens, and obviously, it's not, it's not a product that's designed for teenage use, and it's become somewhat of an epidemic amongst the teenagers. I know at the high school where I teach, you know, we have kids that, you know, get caught vaping all the time. So it's something that's widely spread, and it is a, it is, obviously, it's very dangerous, it's not healthy. And it appears that it is a win-win, so, I mean, I would, I would imagine, if we move forward, I would think it'd be something that Red Clay would want to kind of jump on the bandwagon with.
And we mentioned it last time, so it'll, it will be something we vote on tonight.
And I have a DSBA meeting on November fourth, so.
It's gotta be voted, Mr. Marinucci needs to know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So we'll bring that up in a minute. And then the last committee meeting that I attended this month was, of course, the CFRC. Jessica Terranova, thank you very much, Jessica Terranova, presented on the school nutrition program since mid-March, and it was really fascinating, including the new meals that they've gotten with the trays. So she went and, she explained a lot about our nutrition program and how we'll be delivering food once school starts, so it was wonderful. She was giving kudos to the transportation team, because they were really helping in the distribution of the food. And then as to the monthly expenditure, so our, the Red Clay team was really working together, hand in hand, the nutrition department with the transportation department, to get the food together and then to have it delivered. So it was really an interesting presentation. The monthly expenditure report, we've received, our, the revenue received is almost sixty percent. Next month is going to be the really important time, because we'll know about tax receipts, which right now are a little bit down from September, but not so much. But it'll be a big month next month, and our expenditures that are expended and encumbered are at twenty-five percent. So we're sitting in a very nice position, and we, the CARES money has been loaded. So we're in a very nice position financially. So that's all I have to add, and I know next is Dr. Bohm.
So I have a committee report to present, and I attended the diversity committee meeting virtually on September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, and that committee met at four-thirty PM. So the committee meeting began by educators and staff members talking about the concerns they have, talking about racism, classism, heterosexism, xenophobia, et cetera, with students and other staff members, other colleagues in the building. So a lot of people participated in that conversation. Then we talked about PD a little bit, and one of our educators in the room, I won't say her name, but she knows who she is, she talked about the fact that PD is really good, and it's really important. However, she said that educators are feeling exceptionally overwhelmed, especially this year, and she made the request that educators be provided with additional time for PD, especially at times of the year that aren't at the start of the school year or at the end of the school year. She was saying that a lot of the PD, like there was PD, I think, on October ninth, it was provided during the time that educators were supposed to be in their rooms, getting their rooms set up, or doing things like that. So she was saying that the professional development that occurs needs to occur at times in which educators can actually sit down and listen to the professional development that's being offered. And to quote her, she said, "PD for teachers is a must, and October ninth is going to be super busy for us to go back into the classroom and then do the PD." And she said, "The district must make professional development a priority, especially around issues having to do with diversity, and it should be on a regular PD day, not a day to fix our rooms." So there was a lot of conversation about PD and when it was offered, and then I think one of the really great things that I took away from the meeting at the end was that Dr. Bond proposed that there would be a student diversity committee, and that was a direct result of students advocating on their own behalf and demanding that there be a district-wide diversity committee, or that they be allowed to participate in this, the district-level diversity committee. So I think what Dr. Bond and her colleagues decided is that there would be representatives from each school, from our high schools, that would be on the committee, and that they would begin to meet in January of twenty-twenty-one, so that was very exciting. And as we move forward, it will be very wonderful to watch as this committee moves towards developing more policy around inequity issues, and trying to figure out how to create more equity, because we all know that the hard lifting comes in when we have to create policies and get them passed by our board. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Bohm, and now Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, everyone, I hope everyone is doing well. Just a couple of things, I did attend the Teacher of the Year Award with Superintendent Green, and I have to tell you, it definitely was a remarkable and memorable evening. Congratulations to Ms. Kim Stock, and I appreciate you representing our district, and looking forward to you representing us at the state level. I also wanted to congratulate Ms. Ellis on her achievement of being the Red Clay Support Professional of the Year. And I also want to thank all of those who came out tonight and last week and provided public comment. Thank you for your time, thank you for your patience. I am definitely listening, I am definitely hearing you, and, and appreciate all of the emails and the calls and the text messages, and Facebook messages and so forth. I definitely appreciate that feedback. In terms of committee reports, the facilities committee did not meet this past month. I do want to ask Superintendent Green, in regards to any update on the Reading Consortium Committee. I know there was a committee meeting this month, and I will get to that in a second. But I also want, and, and items submitted by the board, I do want follow-up to Dr. Bohm's request. She made a number of different requests. She makes many requests to this district and to the board, and most times, from my documentation, from what I noted, there isn't much follow-through and follow-up with the requests that she makes. So I definitely want to make sure that the requests, in terms of the analysis that she requested, and some of the data that she requested, and responses that were not, we did not receive answers to tonight, be submitted to the board, and if that could also be included in next month's meeting to update the community, because I'm sure that they want, and you know, when we're asking questions, we're asking questions on behalf of the community, so they're community questions and their community requests. So I want to make sure that gets added to our next board meeting to include that information for, as an update as well. And then I believe tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, we were supposed to talk about, provide a reminder in terms of the, the protocol for obtaining legal advice and the dissemination of legal advice. I will leave that up to Superintendent Green, and that is the conclusion of my report. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, and what you're referencing is Board Policy two thousand and eight, which basically states, "An individual board member may request legal opinion on an issue affecting the board or the district if the response will not require extensive time or research for the attorney. A request for additional legal counsel may be submitted to the board president for approval. If the board president disapproves of the request, the board member may submit it for discussion at an open board meeting or during executive session." So again, that's Board Policy two thousand and eight for the board to reference. And then, all written legal opinions shall be delivered to the board president or the superintendent for distribution to the entire board. So whenever we get a written opinion or board president, we're gonna get a written opinion that should get disseminated to the entire board, and as indicated with the board, we will assure that we adhere to that policy.
Thank you, Drew, for that reminder, because I know that I have.
Can't hear you, I think Mr. Matthews is trying to say something.
Yeah. Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, wonderful, um, thank you, Superintendent Green, for that reminder and for that, the overview of that policy, because I know that I, alongside with Dr. Bohm, have requested the legal opinions that have been disseminated to the district and to board leadership, and, and just want to make sure that we're transparent with that. And then, was there any update with Reading Consortium this month?
And so I did send, members of, I don't know if you received my email. The last meeting that I attended was September twenty-fourth, I believe there was a meeting, a subcommittee meeting on October the eighth that I was unable to attend, you can't hear me?
No, there's feedback.
That I was unable to attend, I believe the next full committee meeting, Mr. Matthews, is on the twenty-fourth, if I'm not mistaken. So I did give the board, I don't know if I sent it directly to you or to full board.
Yeah, I, I saw it, and I know that we had also discussed, we had also talked about it, so I just wanted to know.
So that information, the last meeting that I attended.
They're both on, that's the thing, okay.
Was basically talking about House Bill one-twenty-nine, I believe it was, and looking at referendum reform. There was a group presentation from DSBA. John Marinucci kind of gave a perspective from DSBA. Ms. Florae gave a perspective from the CFOs, and Tammy Croce from DASSA gave a presentation, and Jeff Tashner spoke on behalf of DSEA, and just generally talking about referendum reform as it relates to that. And so, again, I, I did share that information with the board in the next meeting, actually. It's tomorrow night, and the governor's presenting on the settlement, so I have my days mixed up, not the twenty-fourth, but the twenty-second. So that meeting will be held tomorrow night, and it will be focused on the settlement that the, the state has came to with the plaintiffs who sue.
Can I just jump in there for a second, Superintendent Green? Tomorrow night, the Honorable J.P. Street Senior will be presenting at the Reading Consortium, and he's always an amazing speaker, and he has an immense amount of time and work and energy that he's put into Red Clay and all the districts in Newcastle County. So if everyone has time to tune in and listen to the Honorable J.P. Street Senior, you should definitely tune in and listen to him.
Thank you. Okay, so the one last thing, I do think we have to vote on the Juul, on whether or not we want to Juul, join, join the Juul lawsuit. So is there a motion to join the Juul lawsuit?
So moved.
Mr. Casper moves, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson seconds, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, and I didn't get a text if Dr. Bohm or Mr. Matthews wants to say anything. But hearing nothing, Ms. Maria, can we please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So hearing nothing else, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Ms. Sabo moves, is there a second?
Second, this is.
Mr. Wilson seconds, and this one will just do, all in favor? I opposed. Thank you all very much, we really appreciate you coming out, appreciate it, thank you, have a good night.